Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, on Zoom to the Planning Board meeting, January 2025, 7:30 PM. Notice of this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. The next Planning Board special meeting will be held on January 22, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. A Planning Board special meeting will be held on January 29, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person in Town Hall. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held February 5, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mrs. Marado?
Here.
Mr. Wokes?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you. So this is now the annual reorganization. I would like to ask Ms. McGovern to please swear in Susan Scarpah, councilperson, who will be joining the board and the representative of the West Orange Town Council to the Planning Board.
Can we put the oath up, Megan?
So if I put the oath up?
Okay. I have it. Ms. Scarpah, I'll try to find you on the, okay.
Right here.
It's kind of faint to read. I'm going, if you'd repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Susan Scarpah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Diana Fries?
Yeah. Diana later. I froze. I'm sorry. The Constitution of the United States, she said that part, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
Do the same.
To the same.
And to the governments, my internet went out. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Oh, here we go. And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties of.
Perform all of the duties of.
Planning Board member.
Planning Board member.
The best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We will have you swear. I will get your signature and notarize that when I meet you in person.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome, Councilwoman, to the Planning Board.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Councilperson Scarpah, welcome to the Planning Board. Thank you. Be seated. Okay, so this is also the annual reorganization. So at this time, the position of chairman is vacated, and I turn the gavel over to Vice Chairman Guarino for election of the next chairman of the Planning Board. Vice Chairman Guarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to my fellow Planning Board members and welcome to Councilwoman Scarpah to the Planning Board. So at this time, I'd like to open up the nominations, and I'd like to submit for nominations for chairman is Dr. Robert Bagoff.
And I'll second that.
Oh, thank you.
I third it.
You're worth getting away with this one.
Are there any other nominations for the office of chairman? Hearing none, the position, I mean, the, you know, the nomination is open to Dr. Robert Bagoff. Yamalat, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan? No.
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
You betcha.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes, amen.
Mr. Guarino?
Absolutely.
Chairman Bagoff?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'd like to thank the members of the board for your support again, and I have a written statement that goes only about 35 minutes. No, no, no. At this time, at this time, the position of vice chairman is vacated, and I would like to nominate Mr. Guarino for the position of vice chairman. Jerry Guarino for vice chairman. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, too.
Mr. Smiraldo seconds. Do I hear any other nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none. That is closed. Yamalat on the motion, please.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Guarino. Thank you. I would like the board to consider, and I make a motion, that we retain Yamalat back to zero, Vite, as the Planning Board Secretary. Do I have a second? Everybody seconds. Okay, you pick what you want.
It's unanimous.
On the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes, I will agree to this.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Absolutely, yes. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Diane Powell McGovern as the Planning Board Attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. This is like Jeopardy, all the boxes.
I need a buzzer, yeah.
Okay. Yamalat on the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Absolutely.
Chairman Bagoff?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you so much. I would like to recommend to the Planning Board that we retain the Nishuane Group and specifically Gerard Hazel, the principal, as our planner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. Pretty quick on the button. Good.
There you go.
Go for it, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Planning Board that we retain John Hess from CME Associates as our consulting engineer. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman seconds. Thank you. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Thank you. We did good. Mr. Klein is not here. I'm going to ask him to be our representative to the Sprab, and Mr. Guarino, will you be the alternate to the, as representative to the Sprab?
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Alpert, we're going to see about what you can do to keep us abreast of environmental issues. We'll talk after the meeting. Cool beans. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for appointing me. Thank you for your point. I'm sorry. Who?
Me. Yes, the representative is Mr. Klein, the alternate is Mr. Guarino.
Yes. Yes, I have to talk to Mr. Klein since he's not here, but I'm hoping we get that.
If we take a vote, he has no choice.
Yeah, that's the way I got to be chairman last year. Okay, thank you very much. And to the members of the public, I want to thank you very much for sitting through our reorganization. It is part of the process that we go through every year. It allows each member of the board to have say in who becomes chairman, vice chairman, and stays on committees. So I thank you for your time. Now, I would like to recommend we adopt the minutes of PB 2406, I'm sorry, the resolution, 410 Main Street LLC, the draft resolution. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
One second, I'm sorry. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Alpert, yes, okay. Mr. Klein is not here. Mr. Morgan is not here. Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Hey, if you please raise your right hand, then we have, well, we have a couple. We have Ryan McNeil, we have Mr. Hazel, and I also see Phil Scott. Okay, Mr. Scott, if you'd raise your hand as well. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
Okay, that's three yeses. Outstanding. Okay, the first thing we have is an ordinance review, 287824 ordinance supplement in chapter 25 banning pop-up parties, and we have a review by Mr. Hazel about banning pop-up parties and the consistency with the master plan. Ms. Hazel, would you give the board your expertise on this?
Certainly. I believe you do have my report on this consistent, this consistency report. Essentially, this is an ordinance that was voted on by the municipal council. Essentially, the purpose of the section is to provide recourse for township, for the township. If such pop-up parties defined herein occur in future and put the public on notice that the same are prohibited as a health and safety concern to general welfare of the public. As I indicate in my review, the master plan does not explicitly address this particular issue, concern. However, in my opinion, it does fall under the general parameters of the master plan to safeguard the physical and otherwise attributes of the township's neighborhoods. And in so doing, I believe that this does, is consistent with that goal of the master plan.
Okay, do any members of the board have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just as a comment, this ordinance is being supported by the administration. Since I do represent the administration, I just want to let you know that this is something we need for a tool to help with our residents. So I'd like to just make sure that this has been put up by the administration to the council, which was the first reading, and therefore, any consideration will be appreciated by the administration.
So the question I have for you, Mr. Smiraldo, since you brought that up, is, this is now in section 25, which is land use, but the administration of this is policing. Is that correct?
No, this would be that it would give our zoning officer and representatives the ability to visit the site. We've had issues in the past where these parties come up, not only just with the land use, with the zoning, but also with the health department, because we don't know whether what was being served there, food was being served there. So it's just another tool for us to ensure that we have quality of life in our neighborhoods and keep things safe and to that degree. And that's, that's pretty much why we put it up this way, and it comes under, falls under the zoning official to enforce this part of the component of the ordinance. Anything that has to do with policing, whether it be underage drinking, or anything that has to, that it's in conflict with the law that the police can enforce, they can write their tickets that way. So this is just an overall encompassing to get the, make it a safer, nicer neighborhood for all residents to enjoy.
I'm concerned, we're creating an ordinance for a small group, and that each time a small group comes up, another ordinance will be written. Again, I am just saying that the, to me, if this happens at 3:00 in the morning, which I am imagining that administration is not talking about somebody doing this in midday, they're doing this in the evening, there's music, there are, as you say, as it says in here, wristbands or other other methods of collecting money for profit, that people go to the houses, they may be drinking, they may be underage drinking, there may be food. All these things fall under specific areas of our ordinance. So now we're putting it all together in a new ordinance, but policing still takes over most of this to find out there's a problem, and that the zoning official or somebody from there, or the health department would have to go after the party is over.
No, they can go there during the party. We have, if we're noticed. Some of these parties are daytime. Some of these are, you know, they're over before it becomes a noise ordinance complaint after 10 o'clock. The issue is becoming that we're, and I won't get into specifics of cases, but we have witnessed where people have actually parked their vehicles in other locations, and they were busting and causing large amount of people coming to small neighborhoods, and it becomes an issue, whether it's even at the party or outside the party event, where it becomes a police matter, such as public urination, throwing of garbage and things of that nature. So it's all, this is trying to encompass so that we can, we can act officially in the township to ensure that quality of life remains, whether it be on the property or outside the property, and people are doing this within the confines of what the ordinance is explaining.
Again, I may say personally, from reviewing this and looking at other ordinances, what you're saying to me, these are policing issues. If somebody is publicly urinating, they're not going to call the zoning official. They're going to call the police department. If there is noise, again. However, having said that, if the administration feels there's a tool that's necessary, I will make them, unless there is anybody else that would like to opine on this, I will make a motion that we send it back. I'm sorry.
Okay, Chairman, I was going to, yeah, thank you. I was going to substantiate what Assistant Business Administrator Pete Smiraldo just said. Because we do have all of those other ordinances. They take effect at different times of the day and night, and this ordinance actually helps with enforcement for 24 hours a day by adopting this ordinance, because we have had multiple, it's not a small group, we have had multiple complaints in various neighborhoods on these pop-up parties that get unruly and out of hand.
Okay, thank you. So based on the evaluation of Mr. Hazel and the consistency with the master plan, and he finds it is consistent with the master plan, this, an ordinance amending the supplement and supplementing chapter 25 of the Revised General Ordinance of the Township of West Orange, Banning Pop-Up Parties 2878, there's 24, I make a motion that we approve this, we approve the recommendation to the town council that is consistent with the master plan. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Motion carries. Diana, will you send up to the council that we agree that this is consistent with the master plan, and it should reside in chapter 25 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange?
We'll do that and get it over to you for a signature.
Thank you. We have an application before us, PB 24-153135, West Orange LLC, Block 141, Lot 1, Zone B1, 3135 Harrison Avenue. The applicant proposes to expand their printing and embroidery business, Uptown Printing LLC, by constructing a one-story, 2,130 square foot addition to the rear of an existing commercial building. The addition will include a new entry on the western frontage enclosed by an overhead door for the purposes of receiving and delivering shipping orders for the applicant. Somebody say something.
I will take it if you're.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Jack Dusenberry. I'm an attorney in Fairfield. My license is in good standing, and I represent the applicant tonight. This case established jurisdictional facts several months ago, so they've been carried by adequate notice from meeting to meeting. Affidavit of service and notice of publication were properly provided by the applicant. The location of this property is 3135 Harrison Avenue. It is Block 141, Lot 1, and is a lot 7,513 square feet in size, fairly small lot. It's in the B1 Central Business District, and the current use for a accessory printing business, which my client will get into in a few minutes, is a permitted use. So the nature of this case is for a site plan approval and C variants approvals to permit the expansion of the printing and embroidery business with an addition to the rear, which our architect will describe in a few minutes, and that addition is about 2,130 square feet. All right. I have three witnesses this evening, Mr. Luis Crespo, the applicant, Joseph Haines, our architect, who prepared the floor plans and the site plan, and Mr. Anthony Marucci, who this evening is here as a professional planner. So the relief sought, in addition to the site plan approval, is six variances, five of which are pre-existing conditions. So let me first tell you what the new condition is that was, is generated by the addition, and that is a side yard of 5 feet 4 inches on the left side of the property, where the proposed addition will be located, and that width and that slight encroachment to the setback is generated by the need of a 6-foot overhead door for access to the new addition for deliveries and for shipping. This matter was heard in October by the Sprab. The applicant responded to the comments from the review board and reduced the size of that opening from an 8-foot door to a 6-foot door, which has substantially reduced the request and need for relief. 6 feet is required, and as I said, we're providing 5 feet 4 inches, so we're 8 inches short. Now, as to the pre-existing conditions, we have overall side yards that don't meet the 6-foot requirement on both sides. One is an existing of 2 feet 7 inches, and others 5 feet 4 inches, which is at the proposed addition. We have only one parking space, and arguably, it is doing double duty as a driveway and a parking space for Mr. Crespo, and the ordinance based on square footage requires 18. So we'll talk to you about parking and the impact of the new addition on parking during the course of our testimony. We also have an existing driveway width of 13 feet 8 inches, where 14 feet are required by ordinance. Again, a slight deviation and pre-existing to boot. Next, we have a, an existing parking space where we have backing directly into the public right of way. That's prohibited by ordinance 25-12.1F, and Mr. Crespo will explain how that currently works, and that will not change by virtue of using that same driveway to get to the door on the new addition. Then finally, we have another final pre-existing, a parking space shall not be less than 5 feet from an adjacent property, and if you count that driveway as a parking space, it is closer than 5 feet from the adjacent property line, and again, pre-existing. So we have three reports. One for Mr. Hazel, a planning review, and we have an engineering review for Mr. Scott, and we have the Sprab report from October 8, 2024. I'm unaware of any other reports. If there are any, I will be surprised and unhappy. I don't believe there are. I will point out to you that both the planning review and the engineering review were done prior to the Sprab report, so during Mr. Haines's testimony, we'll tell you what was changed in response to that meeting, and we think it substantially improved the application to put before you this evening. Other than that, that's my opening statement to lay, to give you the lay of the land, and I would like to start with Mr. Crespo, unless the board has questions before I begin.
Now, Mr. Dusenberry, thank you. That was very, very informative and concise, and I appreciate that. Go right ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crespo, I don't see you on the screen.
He's here.
He's in.
I do swear him in.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Crespo, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Crespo, you're the managing member and the sole owner of the property and on behalf of the applicant, 3135 W O L L C?
Yes, Jack.
And you're the owner of the business, Uptown Printing?
Yes.
And that occupies the entire building, even though looking at it from the front, it might appear to someone as three separate businesses?
Correct.
But it's all one business by you in one building?
Yes.
All right. You currently have, let's talk about the operation as it exists today. How many employees do you have?
Three, including me.
Three, including you. All right. And you only have parking for one car?
Correct.
And that's your car, and that's the left of the building, left side?
Yes.
All right. What are your hours of operation?
Nine to five, Monday through Friday.
Are you open any evenings?
No, only when I stay late, but not to the public.
Okay. All right, now, let's talk for a minute about your use of the driveway. You park your car there, and when you get a delivery, there is a side door over there, but it's not the garage door you're proposing on the addition, is it?
Correct.
Okay, so describe for the board, if you will, what you do when someone wants to make a delivery, and there's no place for that vehicle to stop on the, on the street.
Well, the town ordinance for parking in front alleviates that situation a little bit, but the. Well, the town ordinance for parking in front alleviates that situation a little bit, but the three deliveries that we get regularly are UPS, are the post office, and an occasional FedEx delivery. So for the most part, the one-hour ordinance that is in front of the, of the, of the building right now keeps it clear. So the, the, the worst thing that will happen is they'll block my driveway if UPS or USPS needs a little bit more space to just pull over, and then we don't get large deliveries, but figure anywhere from a box to four boxes if we have blank clothing or supplies that they come in from the delivery.
Okay, if it, is it fair to say that once the addition is on and a truck uh, needed to deliver to the overhead door, that you'd simply pull your car out and have that truck back ends? Did make the delivery?
There's two ways. One is I can just back up to the door. My truck will be mo- doing most of the delivery and sending things out if necessary, but if USPS or UPS needs to back in, they, they certainly can. Right now, it's not really a, a pressing issue, and it shouldn't change in the future, even if we make the expansion, but, but it'll be good to have if, if they need it.
Okay, let's, let's talk about the uh, the addition. It's twenty-one hundred square feet approximately. Why do you need it?
For my marriage? Because I have automatic equipment that has been in my garage since we moved into the facility. So it's, it's really just an improvement into the efficiency of my existing employees. Uh, to, to paint a simple picture, it's, it's a right now, we have a manual screen printer, which means someone turns the table and applies ink to the various shirts that, that we do for, for, for businesses. Uh, but what we do is, we would bring in what is an automatic printer, which is, it's kind of like the octopus ride, if you've ever gone to the carnival where it spins around and it does the manual work for the printer. So he or she is only responsible for putting shirts on the machine versus putting the shirts on and then doing the application of the ink themselves. So it allows us to do things a lot quicker with fewer resources. So, so that's really the big lift as, as part of this.
So what you're describing is an increase in efficiency. Would that be accurate?
Correct.
All right, is there going to be uh, then um, a static or no increase in your number of employees?
Uh, correct, yes.
All right, might there be a reduction in employees?
Yeah, I could go home at a regular hour every once in a while if, if it, we were able to get through things quicker.
That was very tactful, that you would be the reduced employee so that we're not telling anybody on this Zoom call that they may be losing their job. That was very, very tactful of you.
We love them.
Thank you. Uh, so it's fair to say then that this whole addition is designed and needed to be as large, as large as it is because of the equipment that is drawn on the plans by Mister Haines uh, and, and shown for you to uh, improve your efficiency?
Yes.
All right, uh, is it also fair to say that this will help you to solidify remit, keeping your business in, in West Orange?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, because the goal is increased profitability. That'll help us do a better job of being successful instead of the manual operations with, which definitely hurts into the bottom line.
All right, let's, let's talk about the, the parking situation. Where do you and your employee, well, we know where you park. Where do your employees park?
They park on street parking.
All right, and how long have you been in business there?
Approximately two and a half years.
Okay, and you, have you had any trouble with the street parking for your employees?
No.
And you say that when customers come, the one-hour parking ordinance is a godsend to keep spaces free in front of your, uh, your business?
Yeah, the town's been great in helping us enforce that, and slowly but surely, everyone kind of respects it, the, the laws that we have here.
All right, uh, now, it's not in the application, but at the SBRAB meeting, we had a conversation about uh, landscaping, and I understand that subsequent to that meeting, you met with the uh, the forester or some official with respect to uh, uh, some landscaping in front of the building. What, would you inform the board about that, please?
Sure, so Mister Kip, I reached out to him in anticipation of this meeting to say there are some trees in the back that are in pretty bad shape, but I want to make sure we go through the right channels to make sure if we're taking trees out, we're putting trees in. And he offered me the options, which are, you can kind of pay for replanting to the town, or how about we do something nice in the front? And if you drive up and down Harrison Avenue, you don't see a lot of street trees, which I, we thought would be beautiful. So, so what he was going to put in his submission to the board is, we've come to an agreement where I'm either going to replace the trees that we take down out there financially, or even better is, we'll, we'll put the trees in the front of, of the shop and add some beautification to the area.
So would, you'll carve out some uh, space in the sidewalk and put in uh, tree planters?
Yes, it says. He's pointing me towards the trees that will do best and don't have deep roots, which cause problems for the town down the road. We, we're going to choose the trees that make the most sense for what we're trying to accomplish.
And did you discuss a number of trees across the frontage of your building?
He said at least two, maybe three.
Okay, and you're willing to uh, agree where, or abide by whatever the recommendation is of the forester?
I am.
Okay, um. How do you currently deal with garbage and with uh, any recycling needs?
The, the largest garbage impact that we have is cardboard boxes, because t-shirts get delivered in boxes and the, the more, the majority of them get recycled, because if people come in to pick up orders, we use those same boxes. But we're a pretty light footprint as far as trash is concerned. We probably bring trash out definitely once a week, but I would say once and a half a week. Like, we didn't bring out trash yesterday because it was so windy, and if you look at Harrison Avenue, it, it looks like a tornado went through there. So, so ours is primarily a couple of bags of garbage, and we put out a public garbage can in our alley because it was uh just refuse everywhere. If anybody's ever driven by and seen that alley, we've helped clean up by putting out a public can, so those those plus whatever dry garbage we keep inside the shop, we bring out on Tuesdays and Saturdays to kind of keep things clean around here.
All right, um, Mister Chairman, I don't think I have any further questions for Mister Crespo. I think he's described pretty well what he does now and what he intends to do if the addition is approved by this board. So um, I would open it up to questions from the board and the public.
Okay, so let's start with Vice Chairman Guarino. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Crespo, thank you for your investment in the township of West Orange, and we appreciate your positivity towards our township. Um, during your presentation, I noticed you were mentioning, and maybe I misunderstood, there were trees that may need to be removed, but you also were looking forward to putting in additional trees in the front of your structure and where trees are removed?
Correct, correct. Well, it depends. So in the back, there are trees that need to be removed for the footprint. So, so those won't be replaced, and it's pretty dark and overgrown back there. So, so tho- those would be exchanged for the trees that go in the front.
Okay, you, you do know about our township ordinance for tree removal and tree replacement?
Absolutely. Yes, I'm also a town resident, so, so I've talked to Mister Kip on a number of occasions with business needs as well as personal needs at the house.
All right, and um, and your trash is mostly, you say, cardboard boxes from receiving your supplies and stuff, and that's maintained when it's not, where is that maintained when it's not being put out for collection?
Inside. We, we have a small footprint where we just fold up the boxes and we keep them in a corner until it's recycling day.
Okay, do you have any hazardous materials, sir, from your printing business that need to be disposed of, or it's, they're not hazardous materials?
No, it's, it, I mean, the, the, the industry has evolved where it's mostly transfers now, which are paper-based. So, so everything that would be hazardous actually winds up as the shirt when it's converted to a non-hazardous print. And then we just have the paper backings that, that accumulate, and then we throw those out as part of recycling. So it's a pretty clean operation.
Okay, and, and my last question, which is probably not for you, but for your engineer, your architect, the new section that you're adding, will you be in the interest of adding a green roof or any roof to do anything for the account, you know, for the ecology and any solar panels? Is that, is that your intention?
Uh, I can answer part of that. So, so the, the short answer is my engineer should talk about the drainage component, but absolutely, I've, I've been talking to a solar panel engineer for the last year, where both at the house and as well as on top of the business, we've evaluated what will work for us, and as recent as December, he, we've, I've have a proposal that, that we're going to be working through. So, so I would love for that to happen, because even though we did the P S E N G energy audit and then implemented their recommendations in the shop, solar is, is, is a logical next step for us for continuing the efficiency.
Okay.
Is that a, that's not going to be a condition, is it?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to be a condition, suggested condition?
I would like it to be.
Uh, Mister Dusenberry, is that acceptable?
Well, let me say this. Uh, my experience with solar is that you, you're not ever sure what you're going to get uh, when you finally get down to uh, discussing it with this, the supplier. Uh, we would, we would prefer that it not be a condition and that you accept Mister Crespo's uh, willingness and his desire, which has been very well uh, uh, very evident here, to, to try and do things that are green and solar. Um, you will also note that there is no, we haven't proposed a second floor on this building. It's a roof that's readily available for solar and uh, um, my concern would be that when you finally get down to putting a pen to paper, that the solar doesn't work out to be as efficient as it might be or as cost-effective as it might be. So uh, I would prefer that it not be a condition if uh, the board could see its way to allow Mister Crespo's representation to be acceptable.
Okay, I can. And the last question I have.
I, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing Mister Guarino. Is it just me or is it?
Can't hear you either.
Yeah, it's not just you.
Sounds like you moved away.
Okay, I gotta be a true politician. Okay, hold on.
No, that's good.
There you go. All right.
Thank you, sir.
My last question is, have you uh, had any discussions or conversations with the Downtown West Orange Alliance about any facade improvements, any, you know, advertising materials on the building, staying within the code of the downtown environment?
I think the short answer is I, I'm on the downtown board. So, so I'm on the Downtown Alliance Board. So I think that's a yes, because they've been in here, there all the time. So, so I think we're in compliance with that is, is a, hopefully a quick way of answering that question. I really care about the improvements of downtown, and I'm recently been promoted to Vice President of the Downtown Alliance Board.
Well, my thanks to you, and I'm sure my thanks from the rest of the township. That's all of my questions, Mister Crespo, Mister Chairman. Uh, I'm done with my questions. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Mary McCartney, do you have any questions?
Hmm, not so much questions. My question was really going to be about the trees that were coming down, but Jerry handled that. I wanted to thank Mister Dusenberry for uh, listing the pre-existing conditions. I understand the area, and I think that all makes sense. And I also agree with you about the condition. I know how conscientious Luis is about energy efficiency and cost-saving practices. He was actually one of our spokespeople and spokespersons in our Sustainable Jersey video introducing the P S E N G program uh, to our community about energy efficiency. Um, so I would not want it to be a condition because you have to see if it actually works out uh, for the property owner himself. And Luis, I just thank you for your community spirit and your volunteer efforts on the Downtown Alliance, your investment in town. And thank you for being our spokesperson for that P S E N G program.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Councilperson Scarpa?
Yes, um, I didn't really have any too many questions at this point, because my concerns too were really primarily regarding the trees, and I really appreciate the applicant's interest in really beautifying the neighborhood and preserving those trees. I just wanted to ask if there's any issues related to stormwater? If there are, if they've looked at our latest stormwater or management ordinance?
I, I think that's a question best left for Mister Haines.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get to it. Thank you. Mister Alber?
Um, no, thank you very much.
Uh, Mister Wilks?
No additional questions.
Thank you, Mister Morgan.
Uh, no additional question, just one comment. I know how tricky it can be shopping for solar. I, I shopped for five years myself before we landed on the plan that worked for us. Um, I was meticulous about it, and you know, sometimes you run into unintended roadblocks, so all the best with that pursuit, and thank you for your participation.
I would like to pick your brain if that was okay with you at some point to, to kind of vet.
I, I'll give you what I have. There's not too much left, but I'll give you what I got.
It's been two years since I've talked to him. It got hot at the end of last year, but, but I want to make sure we make a smart decision.
Thank you. Mister Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Cardoza, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Capra, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, just one quick question. Um, Sir Crespo, do you have, have you had conversations with your neighbors about the planned improvements? And have they been generally supportive?
Uh, the answer is yes. So both of my neighbors know that we have, even in between us, there is corrosion. There is garbage that builds up. They, my neighbor directly, the liquor store that's, that's next to us. So, so that one, he has, it's kind of crumbling in the back, and he has residents that are at the floor level, so we were, we've actually spoken to him about what we're going to do as far as a retaining wall to help his property, and he is all for it. So, so he may be on your docket at some point also, because he's let it overgrow and become a bit of a mess back there, so we're helping him. And then I think he's going to continue our efforts and improve that area on the liquor store side. And then on the gas station side, there's a mini retaining wall, forgive my hands, that is falling in and allows dirt and debris to come in from their side when when it's windy or it rains. So, so I've been talking to, to Michael to say, well, here's what we're doing as part of our plan. This is a good impetus for you to think about what you can do to clean up this area. And they've both been really supportive. Whether they come through is, is up to them. But as far as we're concerned, our, our neighbors are on board. It's going to help them, even though they, they know that there are things that they should be doing as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Mister McNeil, do you have any uh, question from CME Associates?
No, I, I believe uh, Bill will have to address this one.
Matrix is the one, Dr. Baglo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mister Scott from Matrix?
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, I have no questions for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Scott. Um, Mister Hazel, you have a memorandum dated September sixth, twenty twenty-four. There are also a number of waivers, Mister Dusenberry, that you're requesting. Mister Hazel, will you just go through the, uh, requests for um, waivers and your description of the property?
Uh, in terms of waivers, uh, waivers have been requested uh, from township ordinance, uh, item one was a key map uh, at specific scale showing location of tract and reference to surrounding properties, streets, municipal boundaries, et cetera, within five hundred feet uh, of the, the site. And we have no objection, I, I have no objection to, to this waiver being uh, granted. Secondly, uh, waiver was being requested uh, from the ex, number, item number thirty-one, existing and proposed condo intervals uh, based on the USGS and GS datum uh, to be shown on the, this, uh, on the plans. Uh, no uh, objection to that waiver as well. Uh, number three was item number forty-four, a lighting plan and details. And we did ask that this be provided. And I believe it was in the revised plans. The applicant also indicated at the SBRAB that the, the lighting that was proposed was going to be uh, primarily in the single parking area at that entry to the building. So there was not going to be a, a situation of uh, any excessive light spillage onto the properties on the surrounding, the, the extension at the back. Um, item four was uh, number forty-five landscape plan and details prepared by professional landscape architect. This, again, we did ask for some uh, in- information on this, and I think that the applicant has provided uh, the same tonight with the uh, uh, with the description of the proposed tree plantings on the, on the frontage. Um, and I do have a question about that, but I'll come back to that. And number five would be item number forty-six, which is solid waste management plan, uh, which is also something that I think the applicant addressed tonight. Uh, in terms of the, the, the landscape plan, uh, my question was, I know you did speak to the, the, this, the township's arborist. It appears to me that the sidewalk in front of the, the site is a bit narrow. Was there any concern expressed um, by Mister Kip or otherwise, that any tree or tree pits there might be constricting to the uh, sidewalk? Especially if uh, you have any like wheelchairs and things of that sort that are trying to pass by?
May I address?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, great. So two things. One is the sidewalk itself. It has removable papers. So as far as an impact to the sidewalk themselves, is all, they're almost like little perfect parking spots to put the trees in. And then he mentioned that these trees would work because he has a list of And then he mentioned that these trees would work because he has a list of of, call it. Forester certified trees which grow up and don't spread roots and grow leaves at an acceptable height. And won't be an impact to walking space or cars that need to park in front. And any wind conditions that that are out there. So, so we we kind of went through a little checklist of the things, the pros and cons, and and he gave it the thumbs up as. As far as his list of certified trees would be well accommodated in the front of the building.
Uh, very good. Uh, I have nothing for the rest of the chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up on that for a minute. Mr. Crespo, you're more than willing to follow whatever recommendations the arborist makes, are you not?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I want them to do well.
Hey, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Crespo and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Crespo and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet.
Okay, seeing none, Mr. Dusenberry, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and uh also I want to thank you for reminding me that I should have listed the request for waivers in my opening and failed to do it. So.
That's why I keep me around.
Yeah, well, I heard you got voted in for another year and I, well, I'll send you my condolences later. I would like to call Joseph Haynes, our architect, who has prepared the the plans that you see tonight and also prepared the site plan.
Hey, Mr. Haynes, how are you?
Good, how you doing tonight?
I'm good. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Haynes, have you ever been qualified as an expert in architecture by this board?
Yes.
You have, and when was that?
Approximately five years ago.
Okay, for those members of the board who have, uh, who may not have been there and had the benefit of your expertise, would you just? Give us a brief summary of your credentials and your experience.
Sure, I'm with the firm Dasse Haynes Architects, located at six.
Excuse me, hold on, hold on. I I'm sorry, Ms. McGovern, I should have let you swear him in first.
Oh, I did, I already did.
I'm, did I just miss that?
You know.
That's what happens when you try and double, you know, look at your text messages at the same time you're listening to the testimony.
I totally understand that.
I will say this, in deference to the board, the text messages were from the team on this application, not from other people. Alright, I'm sorry, Mr. Haynes, please continue.
No problem. I'm with the firm Dasse Haynes. Architects located at seventy-four East Prestack Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology in nineteen ninety-one. I received my license from the state of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-four. It's a good standing today.
Thank you, sir. Unless any member of the board has any questions about Mr. Haynes, uh, we accept you as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much.
Alright, Mr. Haynes, will you, uh, uh, describe the the work that you performed, uh, this evening for, uh, Mr. Crespo? Uh, tell us about the the building, what's proposed, give us the details about the site and, uh, have at it.
Sure.
Could you just give us the date on your plans, the least, the last revised date? I'm having a hard time reading it.
The last revised date is October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And I'm going to be referring to drawing Z one, Z two and Z three. And if you want to, I can bring them up on the screen.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes, while you're doing that, that that revised plan was subsequent to the sprab meeting, was it not?
That is correct.
And you also provided a letter with that outlining exactly what was changed?
That is correct, and that's also dated October sixteenth.
Great. And Mr. Haynes, while you're doing this, would you do me a favor and just respond to the matrix engineering? Uh, letter of September sixth, twenty twenty-four in your, uh, testimony?
I will.
Thank you.
I think, good. Everybody can see the screen?
Yes, sir.
Alright. The the property is located on Harrison Avenue, thirty-one dash thirty-five Harrison Avenue. It's located between Maple Street and Kirk Street. It's located in a B one zone. And on either side of it. To the south side is a mixed-use building, which has a liquor store, a florist and apartments. And to the north side is a auto repair shop. They're both in the, in the same zone, the B one zone. Uh, surrounding the rear of the property. Is, uh, one, one family home and two family homes, all within the, uh, RT zone. Uh, as previously discussed, our proposal is to put a one-story rear addition onto the existing building. Uh, I'll get into the use in a few minutes. But our, our objective was to increase the footprint. And 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 work within the terrain of the property because as you'll see. The rear property slopes up towards, towards the rear yard.
And this is Z one, is that correct?
This is the B one zone.
No, no, uh, the B one zone, but the the plan is Z is.
Oh, I'm sorry, correct. The drawing is Z one.
Okay.
Site plan and zoning information.
Thank you.
The existing site plan shows the existing one-story building. Uh, you can see what it was originally designed. It had three different floor levels. So while you, when you look at it from Harrison Avenue, it kind, it shows that it looks like it's three separate stores. But Mr. Creswell does use it as just his, his business and he and he tries to work within. The stepping of the floors that as it goes from, uh, south to north. And it raises up eight inches at a, at a time. Our proposed addition would be, would line up with the lower level to the south side. Uh, our proposal of the rear yard as it exists. You can see the topography, it it grades up dramatically in the rear yard and it's. It is, and the rear yard consists of a gravel, a gravel area in the back. And then, you know, a wooded area as it, as it, uh, as the grade goes up. Our proposal is to add on a addition that's two thousand twenty-six square feet. One story. And and it's going to attach to the rear, the rear of the building and be approximately the same height. As described before, our setbacks, I'll, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see better. That we're proposing is is six foot three on the north side setback for the side yard. The rear yard is thirty foot ten, which is, which is, which, uh. Is allowed, I think thirty is the rear yard setback, so we we meet that requirement. And then the variance that we're looking for is a fi- we have five foot four with six foot is required for the side yard setback. Which is along the south side, like previously discussed during the scrap, the scrap, the scrap meeting. We were at three foot four and we increased this an additional two feet by reducing the, uh, the doors going into the rear addition. And, uh, it gave us the opportunity to do additional grading along the side over here. So. Looking at the grades, once we increased the side setback by two feet, we introduced. A low retain, a low retaining wall, approximately two foot high. At its, at its highest point, a little bit over two foot high at its highest point. That will let us grade this side property. So that no water will run into our neighbor's property because it was really close and low down on this side. And we could retain all, any kind of runoff we have and actually pitch it slightly towards the driveway. And we proposed a gravel over filter fabric in here anyway, so it's a clean environment. And it will also drain through any, any kind of water that we have there. The rear of the property, we're trying to maintain it. As it, as it exists, it's, it slopes towards the south a little bit and it's heavily vegetated. And the trees that we could keep, we, we are keeping. There's, there's an eight-inch diameter tree here. There's a big forty-two-inch diameter tree here. Another eight, another eight. The few trees that we're removing are all in this corner of our addition. Which as you can see back in the existing plan was one, two, three, four trees that were proposing and needs to be removed because of the addition. So the building has an existing basement. It's going to remain, the uses are going to remain the same. There's equipment down there. Very minor storage. Uh, and the use, it's, nothing's going to change in the basement as it exists. The, uh, the existing first floor is going to pr- remain pretty much the same. I'll zoom in a little bit here. Uh, this existing workspace, all the way to the right is how it exists right now. Uh, currently, Mr. Creswell's office is, as soon as you walk in the door, his desk is right here. That's going to become a little bit of a showroom for his products. And we're going to make the everyday entrance to the retail entry over, over on the left-hand side to the south corner of the building. We're going to have a retail counter, so it becomes more of a, of a, of a business. And right now he does all his transactions at his desk when people first walk in. Uh. In turn, we're going to move his office back into this portion of of the building, of the existing building. We're going to create a new ADA, ADA bathroom. Right now, if you can see over here, we're showing where the demo bathroom exists. So we're going to, we're going to make a new ADA, ADA bathroom there. And then we're going to go back into our new addition. And like I discussed before, the, the new addition is two thousand twenty-six square feet. Mr. Creswell described his equipment that he wants to put back there. Uh, we have printing machines back there. And, uh, we're, we're creating a new shipping and receiving area. And like, like Mr. Creswell just discussed, this is going to help increase the productivity of his business. And the last page I'm going to discuss is drawing Z three, which, which shows the elevations. Really, the only. Elevation you're going to see is from the, uh, is the proposed east side from the street. Which is a little portion that's maybe, that's not even maybe, it's like eight foot wide, which has a six-foot door here. Uh, we introduced a canopy when we reduced the door from eight to six because the idea of the eight-foot door was that. We could back the truck in, oh, excuse me, the van in inclement weather to load it. But since we reduced the size of the door, as a compromise, we put a canopy so that we have some protection when they were loading up the van. For deliveries. And then the, the whole building is going to be a, a stucco finish, matching pretty much the stucco finishes on the existing building. On the sides and rear of the existing, of the existing buildings. We added a few windows in the rear, in the rear to provide light for the interior space. Uh, we did have an air conditioning unit, mechanically even up on the roof, but now we, since then. Decided to do a mini-split system. It would have a condenser mounted to the rear wall, which we show here. So that's my overall of the proposed design and plans. I can go through the letter if you like. Yes, please.
Alright, in.
Anything that you don't, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
I was going to say, though, before you, before you go through the, uh, the letter, uh, let me just ask you this. One could look at this and say, um. It's a pretty good-sized addition. Why didn't you consider, or have you considered going to a second floor? As opposed to putting the addition out the back? Would you, would you give the applicant's answer to that question, please?
Uh, it's, it's a type of use that Mr. Creswell has, to have it on two levels and have the equipment. Just doesn't work with the type of, of, of business that he has. Uh, that's, that's probably the biggest reason. The second reason is, is accessibility, having a set of stairs, elevator. That you would need to go up and down. Uh, it's more logical to be all on one level.
Alright, so there's no plan to come back to this board or any other board and put a second story on this building later, correct?
There is no plan for that at this time.
And the flat roof could be, um, accommodated or could accommodate, uh, solar energy panels and stuff?
Yes, they can.
Alright, providing that, we already had that discussion with Mr. Crespo, but from an architect's point of view, it could be done.
Correct. And as a side note, I just put them on my building. It took me about three years to do it as well. And I'll let you know if it work, how it works out in about another three years.
Okay, having interrupted you, would you please go back to the matrix letter and and go through those points?
Okay. So I read a one by one?
Yeah, I think some, some of them we can, we can skip as you go through them, but I think the, the board would like you to just tick them off so that they know that they've been addressed.
The first one is a survey provided by Arctic's plan, so the existing conditions at March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, destroyed. Does not include building cellar doors, drainage structures, piping, dis- utility services. An updated survey should be provided as used on a map for a site plan.
Was this, was the survey adequate from your point of view to develop the plans that you have in front of us?
Yes, yes, it was. Uh, all the utilities exist in the building. We're not bringing any additional utilities into the building at this point. Uh, the access to the basement was actually built, it wasn't built all doors, but there were actually doors. You know, that you could open up and walk downstairs, which you could see in my plans right here. Here's one of them that was here, and this is the other one that was outside. We're actually going to retain those. So access, you know, is, is still access to the basement multiple ways. From inside the, inside the original space and then the outside ones we're keeping as well.
Alright, does your design comply with all fire codes?
Yes. It will.
And I guess we could go to, um. Number two, demolition two point one. You talk about the minor exterior wall that's going to be removed?
Correct, there's a very minor wall. That's, that's located. Right over here. It's, it's a little concrete block wall. I think it was just helped, put there to hold up a little bit of the driveway, I'm not too sure. But we're going to remove it and then we're going to propose, now we propose putting a new retaining wall along the whole side, right, you know, where it is and it goes along the property line.
Okay, I, I'm just going to, I, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, I can facilitate this, uh, going through the letter a little faster. Um, three point one deals with site conditions, I think you've adequately described them. Uh, three point two, uh, talks about the single parking space, uh, which Mr. Crespo addressed. And we just show where that one spaces on your plan.
Sure. Which, which is right here.
Okay, and we've talked about the, uh, the revisions to the plan on, in three point three, dealing with the overhead door.
Correct, and then no functional change.
Alright.
Now it exists right now with the driveway.
Okay, uh, three point four, does this comply with ADA requirements?
Uh, it, it does by, we'll have an ADA entrance coming in the door here. And we have an ADA bathroom back here to serve the public and the staff. The existing spaces going up are existing. But our new addition will comply and be at the same level.
Okay, three point five, we just show the board where the existing driveway fails to be five feet from the, uh, next door neighbor.
Right, so if, if they're parking within this driveway spot. And the driveway here is a parking spot, the property line is located right here, which is, which is the liquor store building next door.
Alright, three point six, um. Is there any intention of, uh, putting in any monument signs or additional signage on the side of the building?
Not at this time.
Alright, and if there, uh, is any signage proposed, uh, will comply with all, uh, ordinance requirements, correct?
That is correct.
Alright, um. There's some fencing, uh, on the property shown on the plans, and I guess historic fencing. Is there any plan to install any new fencing?
There, there's a remnants of a fence that runs along on, on the adjacent property zone. You can see it by my little line and X's here. That runs along, it kind of dies off in this corner over here. Uh. It doesn't serve much of a purpose right now. It's, it's halfway down. It's his, it's on his property, not ours. So I can't say we're going to remove it, but, you know, you could speak to Mr. Creswell and conversations with Mr. Creswell. He has a good relationship with his neighbors and I'm sure they're going to clean up this area together when he puts this retaining wall in.
Okay, but there's no, there's no proposal here to fence any of the, uh, the subject property.
We have no proposal to fence in any of our southern properties, correct?
Right, I think, uh. Great, I think, um, I'm down to three point eight. Uh, the survey depicts two window walls on the rear of the building, but no cellar egress. We just talk about cellar egress, please?
We did, was this what I commented before? I guess I go to the site plan again, I mean, the floor plans. Cellar regress would be out the back this way into the addition and out. And up these stairs here and here to get out of the cellar and then out through the showroom or through the existing work area.
All right, and as you said before, all of that complies with the fire codes?
Correct. And the existing eager, the existing window, well, there was one here that's going to remain in the basement, and then we're closing up the one over here in the, in the basement for the new addition. And I guess there was one over there, maybe three of them.
All right, four point one deals with, uh, drainage. Uh, there was no actual drainage plan provided. Will you tell, uh, the board exactly what you think is going to happen after this addition is constructed with respect to drainage?
Uh, sure. Our drainage proposal, uh, was that we're going to propose to collect all the new water, run it through the building and connect it to the existing system that charge, discharges out to the street. So the, the leader that comes down the building, connect it down in the underground that runs out to the street, we're going to connect it the same way. Uh, we did not propose any storm retention at this time because on the property, it's hard to do that. This, the, the neighbor to the south is really low. And the water, storing water will not help him at all in the ground or probably hurt him in his base in his lower level that he has for apartments in the rear. Also, with the slope in the rear yard, it's hard to level out an area to get a storm collection back there as well. So we thought the best way for the project would just be to collect it and then bring it out to the street.
All right, so effectively then, the addition itself works like a stormwater manager in that it collects the water that otherwise was running freely from, uh, the high side to the low side of the property in the rear, correct?
That, that is correct. So we're trying to improve what's out there right now by controlling the, the stormwater, collecting it on the roof and, and keeping it from running, you know, to the south to the low point, which is really the neighbor's property right there, where you had, he actually has, they actually have a, a doorway entrance to apartment right in this rear corner, right here. The lowest point and, and, and this area is very, you know, could give everything up down there. Before, and I think by what we're doing is really going to help the neighbor and address the situation.
All right, um, five point one. You've talked about the removal of the stone driveway and the slab foundation. Um, but no soil disturbances are depicted on the plans. Is, can you respond to that, please?
Uh, it's, it's a slab on grade, so, you know, besides having to take out some soil because of the way the grade slopes up, we are, basically it's going to remove partially the soil when the grade slopes up and then remove soil for the footings down to three feet. So you can put footings in for the, for the proposed addition, so minimal amount of removal soil.
All right, um, in five point two, uh, there's a suggestion that you, um, even though this action doesn't require soil erosion and sediment control permit, that you provide a soil erosion and sediment control plan documenting measures to protect the site. Will you do that?
We haven't done it yet, but we, we can do it and we will do it.
All right, so you agreed to do that?
Yes.
All right, site lighting has already been mentioned by the planner, but, uh, you revised the plan after the sprab to add lighting over where the, uh, new garage entrance is, is that correct?
We, we didn't add lighting at all. What we just pointed out is that there's existing lights to remain. So as it exists out there right now, which, which doesn't have any overflow and has worked properly and safely, is going to remain the same. So there's the two existing lights that are located approximately here and here on the, uh, south side elevation on the driveway side. And they're going to remain the way they are. We're not proposing any additional lights on the property at this point.
All right, so there's going to be no increase to affect the adjacent neighbor. Uh, is the light generated by those two lights, in your opinion, sufficient for deliveries in the evening or coming and going safely?
Yes.
All right, uh, seven point one, um, we've talked about the removal of the trees. Um, his letter says three trees, but I think in your testimony tonight, you've said there are four trees that are going to be removed.
There, we show four trees on our drawing.
Okay, and the applicant will, uh, comply with the tree ordinance, um, and specifically as the, uh, owner has put on the record this evening?
Yes, and, and to make one more point, uh, the closest point from the building to the paver area, this is the par, paver area Mr. Creswell was describing, is approximately five feet. I, I scaled it off on the drawings tonight. Uh, and the proposal for the trees are going to be within the, the, uh, existing pavers that are located along the curb right here. So there'll be ample distance between those pavers or tree pits for, for people to walk past the sidewalk.
All right, is there adequate room to put those tree pits in?
Yes, there'll be going in within this, this paper area, which is depicted by this line right here.
Okay, eight point one utilities, uh, you said that you're not, that all existing services are going to be adequate? And there are no proposed changes or laterals?
I'm sorry, my, my computer's got messed up for a second. What was that again?
Eight point one.
Yes.
Deals with utilities. I believe you testified that there are no changes to existing, uh, utilities proposed?
That is correct.
All right, um, will the applicant agree to clean and televise existing sanitary laterals and any roof drainage laterals, uh, to be reused prior to construction?
Uh, absolutely for the roof drainage, since we're increasing it, uh, and make sure it's adequate. Uh, for, for the sanitary laterals, we're just replacing a bathroom with another bathroom. We're not adding bathrooms. Uh, if it's the board's request to do it, I'm sure Mr. Creswell will. But I don't see it necessary to do the, the sanitary lateral.
All right, uh, eight point two, have any inquiries been made about the sanitary sewage and the authority at the plant accepting any additional sanitary flow generated by the new addition?
Uh, we, we have not, and, and again, based on Mr. Creswell's testimony, we're not increasing employ, he's not increasing employees. And we're not adding any additional bathrooms.
All right, so if it should become necessary to inquire or to obtain any kind of permission for this work to be done, the applicant will do it, correct?
That is correct.
All right, you've already talked in eight point three about, uh, and there being no need to construct above or below grade improvements for utility services, and I think that finishes his letter.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So I, I have no further questions, Mr. Haynes.
Okay, so I'm going to start off since it was his letter. Mr. Scott, do you, does, uh, is everything that you heard acceptable and satisfied with your letter of September sixth, twenty twenty-four?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I am satisfied with their responses. Uh, I do have one specific question, though. Uh, I just want to know the complete disturbance of the, uh, of the site with regard to the new addition and, um, the, the reconstruction of the existing driveway. Reason why I'm asking is just to confirm that we're going to be less than five thousand square feet disturbance. So that, you know, we can ensure that it's not pushing over into being, you know, required to file for soil or to the sediment control.
Yeah, uh, I don't know the exact number right now, but if you look at the addition, it's two thousand twenty-six square feet. And if we gave another five foot around it and the driveway, I can assure it's under the five thousand. If you like, we can, uh, we can apply to the soil erosion sediment control uh, office and, and get a no, a no action required letter. I think that might be typically required.
Uh, I, I, okay, I mean, you can do that. I don't know that it's necessary. If you could just confirm, uh, that you would be less than five thousand, that would be great. Uh, in your testimony, Mr. Haynes, you did mention that you would put together a plan that does show the soil erosion measures. So in that plan that you're showing the soil erosion measure, you could just do a limit of disturbance. And if you can confirm that it's less than five thousand square feet, I, I don't think it would be required for, or necessary for you to, uh, request a, a letter of no interest from the soil conservation district.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, is it okay that they're not cleaning out the sanitary laterals?
Um, I don't have a problem with it. Um, they're not increasing any of the, um, proposed flow. They're just reconstructing, uh, you know, one single bathroom with a, with another single bathroom. So I, I do not have a problem with that. Uh, I do want to also, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, go right ahead, sir.
I, I, I do also just want to, uh, confirm, uh, with regard to the, uh, the stormwater. So you're going to be increasing the, the amount of impervious area. Um, stormwater management, or should I say, um, stormwater detention is not required because this is not considered a major development. I just want you to be able to confirm that the existing lateral where the stormwater is connecting to the existing system is adequate in size. And that, uh, you know, that the increased runoff will be able to be, um, handled either with the existing lateral that you have or, um, by increasing the, the lateral size.
We will do that.
Hey, outstanding. Okay, so let's look for the members of the board. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any question for Mr. Haynes on his testimony?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question in case I missed it. Where you're putting in the new, the driveway, you're improving the driveway there. Will there be any kind of soft signing, letting people know it's an active driveway, particularly for pedestrians?
Uh, we are proposing it at this time. Uh, there's something in mind that you think on a building that says be careful, active driveway?
Yes, I, it's something that's, you know, with pedestrian safety, which is one of our priorities. I mean, Harrison Avenue, it's a thin, narrow road. I mean, even though it's a major road, it's two lanes going each way. Traffic moves heavily and people walk that way, um, particularly even young children. So to me, it'd be very concerning if something, you know, very cosmetic or very, something very basic that will let people know, you know, that it is an active driveway, that they should be alerting to the fact that a co, a vehicle or a truck may be exiting that at any time.
Uh, if I may, it, I, I had that now, twenty-four hour active driveway a- already in existence. I don't know how official it is, but, but there's signage within the, within the alley right now. Cause it was, it was there when I moved in and we just cleaned it up and improved it a little bit. Is that sufficient or is there something more official that's required?
And I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Chris, I'm saying, is there something that can be put that would be reflective on, you know, pedestrian on the sidewalks, you know, where people walking down would see that it's an active driveway, you know?
It, it's hard to put it on the sidewalk because it would impede.
Well, no, I'm saying not, you know, on the building itself sticking out a little bit, there are buildings, you know, that people have little signs that say active driveway. And we, I might ask you for something high-tech that we've done on other buildings, you know, alarms telling people not to traffic, you know, or vehicle was coming in and out. I'm just asking something for something basic that would alert pedestrians that this is an active driveway. I mean, it's going to be lit. We know that and all that. It's just something very basic that is very, you know, important to our pedestrians and very important to pedestrian safety advisory board. So it's something that I'm just asking.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Garino, could you send something to the applicant and it will be up to the applicant to decide where to put it? How's that? Is that okay, Mr. Crespo?
Yes, I'm on board, absolutely.
Can I make a suggestion? Is this going to be a condition? And if so, why doesn't, why don't they work with either the township engineer or the code official or some person?
Okay, the, the pedestrian safety commission and the code official.
Okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Crespo?
Chairman, I also want to add the downtown Western Alliance. They do have design standard guidelines.
Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Council, uh, Mayor McCartney, I'm sorry, you're, you're up next.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Haynes. I wanted to ask, I didn't see on the plan an emergency exit?
Uh, it's occupancy that requires emergency exits. I'm not too sure what you mean by an emergency.
Well, just like, you know, we talked about the front facade and the, um, is there a rear door?
Uh, there's a, there's a, a stepping door, we, the exit door out of the rear of the building, which would be this one, this was exits out to the driveway. So that's a new door that we're proposing. The other means of egress are, are, are the three front doors. One that's going to be active unlocked here where the retail space is, the other two will be locked from the outside, but be able to be unlocked from the inside to get out. So there's multiple ways of getting out. Also, there's a rear entrance, I, it says multiple ways to get out of the building, all, all that, provide egress. A means of egress.
Are you recommending any cameras, exterior cameras?
Uh, that, that's not a code issue. That's a, um, Mr. Crespo would decide whether he want to put cameras on his building for security, safety and so forth.
Yeah, if I may, they exist. So, so we have three hundred and sixty recovery of, of cameras right now. And we've submitted videos to the police department in the past to help them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Other questions, yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Carter. Councilperson Scarper, do you have any questions for Mr. Haynes on the testimony?
Uh, yeah, I just have a quick, uh, question. Um, I know that you indicated that Matrix did not do, um, drainage assessments and that it seems like it might be important that the soil sediment erosion plan be done. I heard a little bit about, um, a stone wall and debris and dirt that's come from it and fencing. And I had an interesting situation with a resident who had a neighbor who put in a stone wall which flooded his basement every single time it rained. And although unfortunately our stormwater management ordinance does not include minor development, in many cases, I believe it should be looked at really thoroughly just to make sure that we're not creating, um, a difficult situation. So I'm, I, I see that you've got the piping of the water. I saw that to, to increase the impervious uh, coverage does not create a variance need. And that the applicant would be piping the water from the rear of the building. You know, I'll leave it to the engineers to determine whether that's adequate. But, um, it just kind of concerned me and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about that.
Okay, uh, to help you alleviate your concerns, the, the lowest point of the, uh, of, of the area in the rear of the back of the building is over on our neighbor's property, which is over in this, this like L right here, this corner right here. And if you can see the topography as it exists, I'm in dotted lines here because we're removing them to put the building. They, they run this way. So this is the highest point and the water actually flows right now on the property towards our neighbor's building. By putting the addition on, which is basically the setback lines that I show here, uh, that close to where our footprint of our building is, that, we're going to basically use our building to collect all this water that was starting here and running towards this building, collect it and get it out to the street so it doesn't run in that, at him anymore. So that's the biggest.
Containing, yeah, you're.
That's a, we're actually containing it on the roof and then bringing it out. So we're actually improving the situation for, for our neighbor to the south dramatically, in my opinion.
Right, so that runoff is going to the street?
It runoff is to be collected on our roof and then get out to the street, correct?
Okay, and the street can absorb that, I hope.
The storm system can absorb.
Wherever it's going.
Correct. And, 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 and that, that's, 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 that's a main factor why I feel that we're controlling the stormwater and making a better situation for our neighbor.
Okay, as long as the runoff to the street is, you know, something that we can tolerate. But, you know, it is important to look at carefully, even though that minor development is not in that ordinance. Many of us feel it should be.
Understood.
Do you have any, a question, a council, a council person?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alper?
Sure, um, I'm not sure with the topography if it would work, but, uh, any thought to making the driveway, um, a permeable surface?
Thought about that.
There was no thought on that again, and, and Mr. Marucci is an engineer, he's going to speak next for planning, but he might be able to talk about this a little bit as well. My, my concern on making anything pervious in this area is, um, we got basements on either side.
Yeah, with the slope, I was wondering about that too. Uh, my other question, if solar, uh, doesn't work out on the roof, any possibility of a green roof?
It wasn't contemplated at this time with our client, but, uh, it, it, it could be entertained in the future if solar does not work out.
Something to think about. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wilks?
No, no other questions.
Great, Mr. Morgan?
Great, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Morgan, yes.
Yeah.
You have any questions, Mr. Haynes, sir?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Meraldo.
Yes, sir. Um, first of all, I, I, what I really appreciate, I see, I see a lot of our applicants maybe doing their homework because they all seem to mention about the fire code now. And I really appreciate that. So thank you very much. Um, and I do wanna delve into that a little bit. Um, one of the things I also wanna comment about this building, I grew up in Virginia. I owned a two-family on Kirk Street at one point, and I, when I first got married, lived on Maple Street. I am very familiar with this building. Um, I remember when I was at his meat market and there was an upholstery store there, so I go back
Right.
ways there. So I look forward to this being improved. So I'm, I'm very happy for this application. I just wanna get some things on the record to make sure that, you know, everything is good with this. So, um, so you mentioned about the fire code. So first question I have, the existing building, the, is, that is, is, is it considered a windowless basement? And with you saying you address, and I'm, I'm making the assumption that you said you're addressing all the fire code, so I'm making this assumption with this. It's a windowless basement. Is it gonna be some kind of a detection system in the basement?
There, there's currently a fire alarm system in the building.
There is?
Currently, yes. Uh, and it's an, it's not gonna be an occupied basement. It's, it's for light storage and
Uh, yeah, but under the fire code, if it's a windowless basement, it doesn't matter if it's occupied or not. It's still windowless. So that's, that's the question I have for that. So so it will be, it's under three thousand square feet, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because the, the shape of that building, it's kinda hard to figure out what the square footage is. So.
I might have it on here. First floor, existing is twenty-three. It's on my Z one building information and
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at Z two and three primarily.
Yeah, that's it. You have twenty-three hundred square feet is the existing building.
Okay, good. So the, and the proposed one story in the back is gonna be no basement, correct?
It's just gonna Slab on grade, that is correct.
Okay, the construction of that area, um, if you're going to put, um, uh, if you are gonna put any kind of solar, what is the roof construction gonna be of? Is it gonna be steel? Is it gonna be, uh, tides or trusses or things of that nature?
Uh, we haven't done construction drawings yet. Uh, we will make it adequate enough to be able to handle solar. For sure, uh, the, the wall's gonna be made out of block, concrete block. The, the ceiling, we're gonna value engineer it and see what makes the most sense. We're probably gonna clear story span it. Um, so most likely it's gonna be uh, open web steel joists. You know, it's, it's gonna be a steel joist, gonna be most likely, but I would not say if we can do it with, with a couple of columns, if it works. But right now, we're clear spanning it, so we're probably gonna have to use some sort of, you know, open, open steel joists or, uh, steel beams or something like that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Um, so, uh, sticking with that space, I'm on, I believe it's Z two. Uh, I'm on Z two, I believe. So looking in the space, the new space, um, you have, um, and I guess this is for Mr. Crespo as well. I see the different areas of screen print and things of that nature. Are, um, are the, um, uh, the materials being used? Is anything flammable? Or is that all, was that all water-based?
Uh, it is primarily water-based. I guess we use acetone to clean these things. So like in a spray can, but so, so I, we cannot say that things aren't completely, uh, fire retardant because, you know, we have to clean the screens with them. But, but other than that, there's no heavy use of flammable materials back there.
Okay, but so if, if it is something like that, it's still, whether it's flammable, combustible, um, I think some of the things we'll have to do as a condition is one that either one, we make sure that there's the proper storage cabinets, the fireproof storage cabinets are installed. Think that, and Mr. McGovern, I think we need to put that in there for, to ensure that that's there.
But as the condition, Pete, if you could say.
Um, if it would be, this flammable type cabinets for any, that's, uh, appropriate for the amount of material being used. You know, it could be a small two-by-four cabinet if, if that's the, if it's minimal amount, or it needs to be
Alright, so flammable cabinets to be determined by the fire official?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and if it's an excessive amount, that's where I wanna know, because we're talking about fire, you know, do, it would've it's a, to a point where it's gonna trigger consideration of sprinklers. That's my, my question. And how much, how much are you gonna have in there? Is this a small amount, like, like, you know, gallons, a couple gallons or nothing heavy duty, correct?
Yeah, there's, the gallon is like the largest size of a container that we have for, it's nail polish remover effectively.
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's not large quantities of anything that I think would justify any for sprinkler system.
Well, I, I could tell you a story on the side. We won't bore everybody with it, but yeah, acetone is very, very volatile. So, um, but that's okay, but that, but they, you satisfied my questions, that's all I did. Um, so but my question is then, if you are going to have some flammables, so this is for Mr. Haynes, in the rear, I see that that's fifty-two feet or so, um, you know, to the one point. Why wouldn't you wanna put some kind of, um, exit door toward the rear of the building of that slab? Like past the, uh, the workspaces and the screen print? Is that, is that possible to put something back there?
Well, originally, it wasn't a part, let me zoom out a little bit here. You can still see my plan, is that correct?
Yeah, I got, I got it up on my screen too, so I could see it, yeah.
Alright, so.
So in that area, in fact, I'm not over there, but I'm putting
In the rear, it's kinda buried in the ground, right? Because the gray comes up on these two sides. So I wouldn't be able to. And originally, when we had the building closer to the property line, it wasn't an opportunity to come out on the south side. Uh, we could introduce in the rear corner over here a door now.
I, I would be comfortable because when you're doing, when you go diagonal from there to that other door or the straight out to the six-foot door, which I would assume is going to be a roll-up door, it's not a quick, easy access.
Yeah, it's gonna, the, the six foot's gonna be a double door now.
Is it double door?
Yeah, it's gonna be a double door. So it'll be easy to get in and out of there, and it's less than fif, you know, it's fifty feet, so it's less than seventy-five travel. So I think it would be okay by code, but it wouldn't be a bad idea for safety to have another means of egress out here. Uh, Louis, would you be acceptable to adding a door back in this corner over here?
I mean, if it makes it safer, then of course.
So that would make me happy too, thank you. Um, so, uh, I think, I think for the most part, uh, I think that pretty much covers it. Um, you know, Mr. Crespo, I, I'm really happy for you. I'm, I'm excited for you. So I, you know, I hope this has worked out very well for you. So I'm satisfied with these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meraldo. Mr. Meraldo, what about ventilation? Does this, because they're using acetone, does this need some type of ventilation system?
I would, I would, uh,
Fan, an exhaust fan?
I would, I would defer to, um, the, the professionals to figure that out because I don't know what, what they're gonna be using it for. If it's like under a gallon, I, I don't know if that's gonna be a lot to require. I, um, but I mean, that may be a question for the fire official that if, you know, Mr. Crespo, could you tell us what, how you're using it? Are you how are you using the acetone? Is it for cleaning? Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's spot use, but the good news is there are exhaust fans over there as it is. So, so we have heat presses. So, so you press down on the transfer or the vinyl and it goes on to the garment. So, so it can get hot. So, so we actually have exhaust fans now for, more for comfort and for my employees. But, but there are two thin wall ventilation fans right now in the alley that, that, uh, that, that serve that purpose. So applause there.
Right, what about the new building?
Yeah, right. So, so then in the new, I, I think that's a good idea. So, so I honestly should have thought of that because for comfort's sake, it, it can get hot with the heat presses. So, so we would, I would be, I probably would have done it anyway, but if, if we're while we're constructing it, we can absolutely put some eighteen-inch or some twenty-four-inch fans over there that, that'll keep the flow of the air happening.
Okay, so would the condition be?
Yes. Yes, Mr. McGovern.
They need a specific description of the condition, ventilation to be added?
Uh, Mr. Crespo, two ventilation fans up to twenty-four inches?
Sure, that's great.
Okay.
Um, and you know why we're at it? The exhaust, the, the drying conveyor, uh, conveyor, uh, that's there. What, what is that? What is that, uh, doing? Is that involve flammables or combustibles?
No, it's just the, it's, it's, uh, like when you toast a piece of bread at a hotel, you kinda run it through the conveyor. It's a conveyor dryer. So, so it just runs the garment through from, you know, ten to fifteen seconds. And on the other end, it's cured the ink that is on the, the garment. So, so it, it, it's just, it's, it's well contained where it doesn't give off a lot of heat, but that is, that's the purpose of the, of the dryers.
Okay, I think I'm satisfied. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Meraldo. Uh, Mr. Cadoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Haynes on his testimony?
No, I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You, Mr., Ms. Capford, do you have any questions on, for Mr. Haynes on his testimony?
Um, yeah, just one question. Um, thank you, Mr. Haynes, for your testimony. Um, regarding the stormwater management, um, was there any outreach to the town engineer or any, um, any correspondence related to connecting into the Harrison Avenue system?
Well, no, I haven't. No, that we, we put our proposal out there and we did not receive any comment on it.
Okay. Yeah, just curious if there, I mean, if there are any known, um, issues with, with the system itself, like whether it can, I, I know that it's, you know, not a substantial additional, um, flow that we're talking about, you know. The addition's not that big, but I'm just curious if, you know, if there are known capacity issues or not.
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, and if we do receive any comment from our plans on it.
Okay. Alright, that's, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
On his testimony.
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of, Mr. Scott, I got you ready. Do you have anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Haynes on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Haynes on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet. Looks like no questions.
But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Thank you very much. You're up, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to proceed with, uh, Mr. Marucci.
Well, right ahead.
Um, Mr. Haynes, do you, do we need to continue sharing your screen?
I could discontinue it.
Hey, Mr. Marucci, where are you?
I'm here.
Hi, how are you? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Marucci, I, I'm pretty sure you've testified before this board as an expert, both in engineering and planning. Uh, this evening, you're here in your capacity as a planner. Um, would you tell the board how many times you've been before West Orange boards or what your general background is in, uh, professional planning?
I, I believe the last Ask Mr. Marucci one question. Is your license in New Jersey as a planner active?
Yes, it is. It's current.
To the board, uh, member of the board, Mr. Marucci has testified before this board and his credentials are well-known to us. Does anybody have any questions about his credentials? Seeing none, we accept Mr. Marucci as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your courtesy. Uh, Mr. Marucci, you've been, uh, you've been retained by the applicant to give professional planning with respect to the, uh, variances, or actually the, the new variants, um, but incidentally to the existing conditions variances that I've enumerated here this evening. Uh, would you tell the board, um, what you've seen, what you, uh, what your opinion is? And justify to this board, uh, that the variances may be granted without, um, jeopardizing the negative criteria.
Of, of course, I'll, I'll try to be brief. A, a lot of the, uh, explanation has, has been given by the applicant and also by the architect. But as, uh, the, the board knows, the property is thirty-one dash thirty-five Harrison's Avenue, Block one forty-one, Lot one. It's a one-story commercial building with three storefronts that are utilized as one use. The use is Uptown Printing, which is an established business in West Orange's downtown. The purpose is to expand the existing printing and embroidery business, which is a permitted use in the B one zone. The expansion is for automation, basically to keep up with the industry standards, basically to stay in business. As, uh, the applicant stated, there are no additional employees, um, which, uh, which will be reflected with the parking, uh, variance. Um, so no additional employees are either proposed or required as part of this application. And it's important to note that the, um, the applicant is part of the Downtown Alliance, uh, of West Orange. The, um, a- as Mr. Haynes explained, the only possibility to ex, to expand the use of this building is to expand it in the rear of the property. The floor plans show the layout with the silk screen printing machines and other printers and dryers. And it's important to note that the applicant, um, complied with the recommendations of the scrap meet, scrap meeting that was held on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. That significantly increased the side yard and, and decreased the variance. Cause the original design was to have a three-point-three-three-feet side yard. And now it's gonna be a five-point-three-three-feet side yard, which means the variance, the side yard variance is only zero-point-six-seven-feet or eight inches. And that's, that's, uh, minimum in, in my, uh, in my, uh, opinion. We're required, we're required to have a six-foot side yard, so we're gonna have a fi, a five-point-three-three-feet side yard. And the need for the variances is because as the architects showed on the plans, they're proposing a six-foot wide door, uh, two, two doors that would open up, uh, it, you know, um, to access the, the, uh, the space in the rear, uh, in order to bring the equipment in, first of all, and also for deliveries of raw materials and, and finished products. Uh, in my opinion, the eight-inch side yard variance is the minimus, um, and also with respect to parking, as the applicant stated, there are three employees, including the owner. And they've, uh, utilized the site for a number of years with the, the, the parking that's there today, which is only the one space. Uh, since no additional employees are needed and the site has been operating with three employees, uh, for a number of years, and it doesn't interfere with overnight residential parking. I, I believe that there is no, no, uh, problem with the, the parking variance either. The variances can be granted under the C two criteria, special reasons. The special reasons are the fact that this is an established business that wants to remain here. Without expansion, the business may need to, uh, leave the community if they can't find another site within the community. It's a permitted use. Again, the side yard variance of eight inches is the minimus. Uh, parking, they've been, uh, utilizing the site for a number of years now with, with the one parking space. And, and, uh, I, I believe the addition doesn't require, because there are no additional employees, it doesn't require any more parking spaces. A number of purposes of the municipal land use law are promoted. The obvious one, A, public health, safety, morals and general welfare. I promoting a desirable visual impact. Uh, the architect showed that you're only gonna see a very small portion of the new addition from the street. But the most important is, is purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And I emphasize commercial, which is what we're proposing here this evening. In terms of the negative criteria, in my opinion, there is no substantial detriment to the public good. And there's no substantial impairment of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. Um, and that's all I really have for the planning part of the testimony. I, i- if there are any questions regarding, um, the planner's report or, or the engineering report, uh, a- as Mr. Haynes said before, I am an engineer also. But I believe all those questions were answered. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Duzenberry.
Thank you. Uh, I have no, no follow-up questions because in, in reviewing, uh, uh, Mr. Hazel's report, I think a lot of the uh, all of his points have been answered by the applicant and the, uh, the architect primarily. And then, uh, Mr. Marucci has justified the actual granting of the, uh, the new variant. So, um, I would defer to the board for questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
None at this moment, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, given a lot of the area downtown is a flood zone, and, you know, we haven't really assessed the stormwater that's going to be draining into the street. Would it help mitigate that by planting more trees with some deeper root systems in the front of that property?
In the front of the property on on the sidewalk?
Yeah, well, that's where the trees are going to be planted, because we're taking down quite a few, and that tree canopy is not going to be really built up with new.
I believe I heard Mr. Crespo, I believe I heard Mr. Crespo explain that he spoke to the forester, and the forester did not want the deep-rooted, uh, trees there, and I'll I'll defer to Mr. Crespo on that. Um, he had the conversation with the, uh, with the forester.
Yeah, correct. I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yes, correct, sir.
Great, so I would say valid concern, and that's why we're leaning on Mr. Kip to say what are the best trees to accomplish the canopy goals, as well as protect the sidewalk and the street and the pedestrians that are over there. So I think that's our best best path, that that we would just listen to his recommendation, if if that works for everyone else.
Right. Yeah, you're required to to plant just a certain amount, but maybe planting a few more might help mitigate that situation.
I I will leave that up to the forester.
Yeah, and we're not opposed to it. As lo- if it's not a requirement, great, but if you, if you pass by, like, we've done a a few things to increase the beautification over here, so so not opposed to it, but but I would have to defer to him as to what makes the most sense, as far as like the proliferation of trees in the front, so that we don't create a problem by trying to do good.
Right, I cre- I appreciate that. Thank you, that's all.
You are. Thank you.
Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Um, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Mr. Marucci, thank you for your testimony. No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Morales, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ms. Cal- Cafard, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. If any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any hands yet.
Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of the meeting. And, uh, Mr. Duzenberry, do you want to sum up?
I would be delighted to. Thank you very much, and and thank you, uh, board members for your questions, for, uh, you know, listening to this testimony. I think it, uh, it's a pretty forthright application. I think we've touched all the bases, both in the reports and your concerns, and that this is, uh, uh, an application that ought to be approved. This is an active business in the community. It's a single business in a building that used to contain three businesses. Um, so I think that, uh, to promote its, uh, continuance in the community has a benefit there. Um, the addition that's going on is not going up, so it will be substantially, um, I won't say invisible, but less visible in terms of its impact on the community. It clearly is serving a need to the applicant to, uh, make his business more competitive and to, um, produce a better product, so, uh, which is pretty much the same thing. Um, you've heard from Mr. Haynes, I think he's answered all your questions. You've heard from Mr. Marucci. Uh, the new variance, we can't do much about the existing conditions. The new variance is de minimis. The applicant, uh, heard the comments from the Scrab Board, um, reduce the, uh, the size of the entry door. Uh, it works well. Uh, I think this is going to be an asset to the community, and we ask that you approve it with the conditions that have already been discussed, and for the most part, accept it, uh, by a very appreciative, um, applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Duzenberry. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of the application. Now back to the board. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. So what we have is an application for an expansion adding to a building. We've heard from Mr. Crespo, who is an employee and the owner. Um, he has given a a great representation of the, what the, uh, business does and how this will enhance his business. Mr. Haynes, the architect, described, um, the building, how it is going to improve the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, bi- the ability of the business to expand in this site. And Mr. Marucci described the engineering, I'm sorry, the planning aspect of it, and spoke to the, uh, variances, and so did Mr. Haynes. And one of the things that we have to do, there are three, there were fo- there were five waivers requested in the, uh, by the applicant that was addressed, uh, by Mr. Hazel in his report, uh, September sixth, twenty twenty-four, based on Mr. Hazel's explanations and the applicant's explanation and the applicant's expert's ex- explanation. I recommend to the board, unless there is objection, we grant waiver one, waiver two, waiver three, waiver four, and waiver five. Does anybody have any objection? Do I have a second to waive those? Somebody second? Great. Okay, I'll just call a voice vote. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. All in favor? Uh, opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, we're going to grant those five waivers. The next part of this is that, uh, part of this is a C-one variance, that there is, uh, exceptional topography that has to be addressed, and part of it is a C-two variance, and this will promote the zone plan. It is not detrimental to the zone plan. It, in fact, enhances the master plan, enhances the community by providing, um, an expanding business in our community for somebody who also lives in our town. Um, it, uh, does not, is not detrimental to the zone plan. And, uh, having said that, and the Ms. McGovern, would you read the conditions that we've discussed so far, please?
Okay, applicant will abide by the tree ordinance in consultation with the township forester to plant trees, uh, on the street. Um, again, in consultation with the forester. Applicant will submit a soil erosion plan or proof that, oh, a soil erosion plan. Uh, applicant will agree to clean out the roof drainage laterals. Uh, and the applicant's engineer will confirm that less than five thousand square foot of soil movement will take place. Uh, applicant will, uh, work with the Downtown Alliance and/or Pedestrian Safety Commission to post a sign at the property alerting pedestrians of an active driveway. Uh, the number and size of flammable cabinets will be determined by the fire official. Two ventilation fans up to twenty-four inches will be added, uh, to the addition. And, um, what I wasn't clear about was an additional exit door was discussed. Is that what it was? And a one additional exit door.
Yes, please.
To.
In the rear, in the rear, in the rear new section.
To rear new section, and that was it for the conditions. Uh, other than typically what you, the board does is they, um, in general, say that the applicant will abide by, um, the engineer's letter, which was the Matrix, uh, report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-four, but the architect went through each one of those, um, items, and there was testimony, and I think that we were covered in the in the, uh, specifics, but if you want me to add that as well, I can do that.
Yes, I would, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, based on what I have previously said, the, uh, conditions, does anybody else have any conditions or discussion about this? Hearing none. Um, I make a motion that we approve, uh, PB twenty-four dash fifteen, three-one-five, three-one-three-five, West Orange LLC, Block One Forty-One, Lot One, Zone B-one, thirty-one dash thirty-five Harrison Avenue, with the conditions as stated. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman's seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkes?
Yes.
Mr. Cadoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarp?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Yes. Mr. Weyeno?
Yes.
Chairman Bogos?
Yes, thank you. Uh, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Crespo. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
To the members of the board, we're going to take a five-minute bio break.
Chairman, just let you know you're not muted.
Okay, I'm just breathing loudly.
Okay, well, just in case you breathe more than loudly.
I I I I'll just stop breathing. Hey, guys. Can we all come back now? Okay, welcome back, back on the record. Application PB twenty-four, there's thirteen, IMMC Health, nine ninety-three Pleasant Valley Way, block one seventy-two dot oh two, lot six, zone B two. The applicant proposes a second-story addition to an existing one-story commercial building for the applicant.
Good evening. Keith Lachlan from the law firm Englishino Taylor on behalf of the applicant.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, it's my pleasure to be here before the board this evening, and we're gonna be very efficient, because I know it's already been a long night. Um, so let me get started, if that's okay, Ms. Chairman.
Go for it.
Okay, great. Well, tonight, we are seeking minor site plan approval from the board to permit a second-story addition to an existing one-story commercial building. The second story will include a one-bedroom dwelling unit for the applicant's own use only, a business office, and storage space in the rear, while the first-floor medical office will remain as is. The proposed mixed-use development is permitted as a conditional use in the B two zone district. Additional related improvements to lighting, landscaping, parking, and signage are proposed. The applicant is seeking the following bulk variances with this application. Maximum lot coverage where sixty percent is permitted, eighty-two percent is existing, and seventy-five point seven-three is proposed, so we're actually reducing the, uh, the lot coverage. Number of parking spaces where twenty-five is required for mixed use, twenty-one spaces is existing and proposed with a shared parking arrangement, and there's no change. In addition, in addition to the extent deemed necessary, the applicant is also requesting variance relief for the following pre-existing non-conforming site conditions. Location of parking spaces, the ordinance permits off-street parking inside or rear yard only. The property includes front yard parking spaces, and that will be no change. Minimum front yard setback where thirty feet is required, nine-point-six-four feet is existing and proposed, no change. Max, uh, minimum side yard corner where twenty-five feet is required, fourteen-point-four-six is existing and proposed, no change. And finally, minimum side yard buffer where fifty feet is required, forty-eight-point-five feet is existing and proposed, no change. We have received the review memos from your board professionals, including your planner, dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, as well as your engineer dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and we are prepared to address all comments and fully comply with all building requirements. With me tonight is our architect, William Gentile, who will discuss our plans. And also with me tonight is Dr. Elian Crock, who is available to answer any questions that the board may have. Unless the board has any questions, I'd like to call Mister Gentile.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mister Gentile? Are you able to?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Great. Can you please, uh?
Oh, we gotta swear, man.
Yes.
Thank you.
I am sorry, can't hear you.
Ma- Miss McGovern, can't hear you.
Would help if I didn't mute myself. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Gentile, could you please provide your credentials to the board?
Yes, uh, William Gentile, architect in good standing in the state of New Jersey, licensed since ninety-four. And I have been before this board, uh, for the original C two variants in two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. We ask that Mister Gentile be accepted as an expert in the area of architecture.
And if any members of the board have any questions, seeing none, we accept Mister Gentile as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Mister Gentile, can you please describe the applicant's plans for the property?
And, uh? Can I share my screen?
Yeah, if you can do.
Is it showing up?
Yes, it is.
Uh, for some reason, I'm not seeing it.
Yes, we're, you're up, sir.
We can see it.
So basically, I, what I have here is the existing site plan. Uh, all the items on here were from the original C two variants, requirements that we, uh, addressed. And so much of the site work is existing with a few items that are, have not been completed yet, because we had always intended to do a second floor. Um, so as we come in, we have two entrances into the property, one from Pleasant Valley Way, one from Mount Pleasant, and then we have identified the series of parking spaces around the perimeter with the areas of landscape that was developed in, in the green here across the front. Uh, there was one area of landscape that has not yet been, uh, completed due to the fact that construction would occur, and that's in this section right in here. There is, um, a fire lane that was required from the previous, uh, C two variants. There was some, uh, uh, parking situations that we had described, you know, provide. Uh, but now going into what we want to do with this building, we have, uh, let's see, here is the, the existing first floor, which is all the medical office building. Uh, there will be a section cut out for, uh, vertical access to the second floor, and then closed vestry bill that keeps it separated from the, uh, medical space. The second floor will come up the staircase here on the eastern corner, and it'll be entrance into a business office and an accounting office that are used, uh, for the purposes of the, uh, office bill, the medical office below. The employees or the occupants of this space will be members that are currently sitting downstairs in the first level. The rest of it is a, uh, residential space that comes, we have a open deck here to, uh, meet the setback requirements on the second floor. Uh, it's a standard living condition with a, uh, living area, diet, kitchen, and, uh, bedroom with bath with a rear exit, uh, kind of like a personal entrance for, uh, uh, the doctor below to access without going outside. The rest of the space here is basically some storage for records and such. Uh, we're going to, the height of the building is not going to exceed the, uh, the limit. Right now, it is anticipated to be just under thirty feet tall. We're going to be building, uh, on top of the existing walls and extending it upwards. Um, I mean, that in, in a nutshell is the, the scope of the addition to the building. So I've, um, let me go back here. I might wanna just, uh, bring in the fact that there were two, uh, drawings, and I should have mentioned this sooner, but there were two drawings that were updated on November twentieth that addressed the, uh, the additional landscape issue that I mentioned earlier, and also, um, some, um, sightline, uh, issues or requests. And this was a preparation of, of sightlines of what we're seeing from the different areas out of each driveway, so that you can just get the sense that there's, there's no obstructions for, uh, for visibility on this, uh, from either driveway. Uh, I, see, it's, uh, so I guess from there, I mean, this is the, this is the bulk of it, of what we're doing. There, um, I could now address the matrix, uh, comments and how we're, we're prepared to handle them or to answer the questions regarding them.
Mister Gentile, I think it'd be helpful if you just, um, hit all of the, our responses, you know, and not to belabor the point, but just to make sure that you've addressed all of the comments from the matrix report in your.
Exactly. Okay, so, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna basically just identify the point uh, by its number, and then provide the, the response that, that I put together for it. So, uh, item one point one, requesting a survey. We plan on doing a survey at the end of the project when the entire project is complete, therefore it's an accurate survey. So there was no issue with, uh, completing that. Uh, this item, uh, the current site plan, two point one, there will be some removal here, uh, and that is particularly the area of the asphalt that will be changed to the landscaping once the second floor has been completed. Uh, okay. There is some error, a little bit of an error on the titling of a particular page on two point two, uh, talking about no, uh, the current site plan and no, uh, uh, what do you wanna call it? Disturbed soil disturbance. There is a little bit, as I could mention, just about two hundred and ninety-six square feet of soil disturbance, and that'll be the extent of it. The, uh, space number five, there was a, a parking space that was, uh, identified as a, um, a compact parking space, and we've since identified that in, as a full-size parking area. The, uh, the other two, other four compact parking spaces are identified as for staff only. Uh, great. So regarding the site plan, um, there are several, uh, which is three point one. There are a couple of items that were not implemented as yet, which, uh, identified as some trash area, some landscaping, uh, some signage. Uh, these will all be, uh, completed as part of the final site plan on this when, uh, all the construction work is, is completed. Uh, three point two discusses the turning radiuses of the, uh, uh, the drive aisle for the emergency vehicle. We received the size of the truck, which is a forty-foot, uh, uh, ladder truck, and we were given the, the radiuses of turning. And so this was, uh, again, this was part of the C two variants that we already received approval on. Three point three, I've, uh, pretty much adder, uh, addressed again, this is the parking of the one parking space number five, has been turned to, to a standard, and the other four compacts are identified as staff. The three point four talked about restriping. This parking lot is in need of some, of serious repair, which was, is planned, and the parking lot will be, at that point, once completed, will be, uh, restripped. The three point five discusses the, uh, handicap parking. As the illustration shows here, we had identified how the size, the symbols of the, the handicap parking space in addition to the mounting of the, the sign, and addition to the sign itself here, that, um, will, will address the handicap ban parking. As far as, uh, ADA access, the road, the, the access way is clear. It's a, a minimum slope to the front door, there's power assist door openers, and, uh, with, uh, handicap restrooms for the, uh, throughout the building, and, uh, wide corridors and such to make it more accessible. At three point six, there was a discussion about a retaining wall. This is a retaining wall that is, uh, currently a difference of elevation between the adjacent property that's, uh, uh, the, next to us here, and there was a timber wall that was originally there that has deteriorated over the years. We replaced this as part of the C two variants that we'd already received approval on. This is of, uh, I think forty-eight inches is the maximum height on this, uh, going down to, uh, thirty-six. The, um, three point seven, uh, replaced sidewalks and curbs. Uh, we had the, uh, get back over here. So there's a discussion about, uh, extending the landscape areas into the right-of-way only be, but it was decided that, or it was determined by us that it would much better appearance to have it continue to the sidewalk instead of a dead zone that would have to be maintained by someone. And so we've, uh, we've already implemented this, and this was also part of what we did for the C two variant. The, uh, three point eight regarding some patio, uh, work that was done, and this was a slight change from our original plan, but we will certainly include details of this and the paving here in our, uh, final submittal for permit. There is a request for, another thing that was not completed as yet is a whole series of Belgium block being brought along this wall here. We, um, we haven't done this as because we're going to have to tear up the driveway and the parking area to, to implement that, and so it hasn't been completed. We have wanted to discuss whether this was absolutely necessary, since this is a block wall that comes right up to the asphalt. And there's, uh, other than just adding additional expense to, uh, trim out the bottom of the wall. This is a discussion we'd like to have eventually. Uh, so to get that, regarding the parking situation, we have twenty-one parking spaces. The, the way they've originally calculated, it was based on the square footage that we needed for the medical, which required one per a hundred and fifty, but moving upstairs, the business office, as a business, it only requires one space for two hundred and fifty. So this would reduce the number of parking spaces required for the business end of it, and we also identified that a, uh, residence on this property would be able to, uh, take advantage of the code that provides for shared parking. And this would eventually now would lead us back to twenty-one parking spaces that we currently have. Three point twelve, uh, there will be no monument signs, no billboard signs of any sort. The building will contain signage, and we will be addressing that as, uh, as the second floor gets built, and we will provide new signage in accordance with the, the sign ordinance. Uh, we are tend to believe, uh, believe we could put signage on two sides. The size and, and the locations will be, uh, submitted in a permit. We, uh, as I've addressed earlier, the, the asphalt paving is, is a mess. We understand that. We would like to be correct that, which we intend to do by milling down and re-sloping some of the drainage, so it drains better, doesn't pond, and, uh, yeah, you know, evacuates the property as, as quickly as possible through the proper means. We're looking into having some, uh, developer, the land, uh, land engineers to help us with how we, uh, obtain the proper drainage and the flow to keep it away from the entrance of the door and drain properly off the, off the, the site. Well, uh, down to the current landscape. Um, there is an issue with the, uh, title block on this particular landscape, uh, drawing, and that will be corrected as part of the, the final submission. The existing landscape situation, the existing landscape has been laid out and was, was, uh, designed and put in place by the, uh, C two variants that we received approval on, and I'm trying to, to locate to my, where I put my parking, but I got it. This pretty much represents what's already been installed. Um, there may be a, there is some stone that's also been introduced in order to provide some relief on the, uh, textures on the, in the, the landscape. But this is a part of what was, uh, requested as, as the C two variants that we've already received. And I've already addressed the issue of this piece of property down here where we extended to the sidewalk, using. As far as, uh, sight lighting, which, uh, two, it's identified as two point one. The, the building currently has, uh, uh, edge lighting or, uh, The, the building currently has uh, uh, edge lighting or cutoff edge lighting attached to the building. That illuminates the um. The perimeter of the building. This lighting will be reinstalled, it'll be removed from this level and raised to, to uh, the eighteen-foot level. To light around the perimeter of this, of the building. There is some uh, additional lighting that is generated off a light pole right here that illuminates the parking lot. We realized that this light at the rear, this, there's a pole uh, here that is currently non-functional. Um, but we do need some additional sight lighting, so we'll replace that light fixture. There was a question about whether uh, there was adequate lighting at this entrance to the property. And we can see that from the matrix that there, it isn't, and we would be looking into putting uh, particular lights. Uh, maybe solar power uh, at either side of the entrance to, to provide more illumination. So um. I think that the, the utilities, uh, we're talking about clearing out, you know, running. Uh, I'm sorry, what is this? We will be cleaning out the sanitary drain and the, the uh, um, the storm drains. That go out and connect to the street, the bra, and we will be connecting the roof drains here. That have come from the second story and connecting to those same pipes to drain into the storm system. Uh, as far as above ground or, or utilities. We currently have a meter on the side of this building here that will be moved around to the rear. And the intention is to bury the supply or the electric feed to the back, so there is no longer any overhead wires. Uh, connecting uh, to the building for electricity. I believe that I've come, I've gone through the entire list. Uh, if I've missed something, I apologize. Um, just trying to expedite this. Any questions?
Yes, you talked about uh, not needing to do Belgian block, I think it was three dot nine. The plan shows Belgian block curbing, and there, there is the retaining wall back there. So you're not going to put additional Belgian block around that, is that correct?
We have been instructed to do that, we preferred not to.
Hmm, okay, when I ask Matrix why, because there is a retaining wall back there, uh. Mr. Scott, can you tell us why in three dot nine they need additional Belgian block on, uh, by the retaining wall?
Um, well, um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, let me apologize for the numbering in the letter on uh. You know, some of the numbering got changed from number four, and then it went back to number two, and then three, but um, with regard to the Belgian block. Um, it was my understanding that uh, well, when I initially reviewed this project. I was not aware of the previous application for the C two variance, uh, application that was previously done. So some of the comments that I had were, you know, because of discrepancies between what was. I guess shown on the survey versus what is shown on the plan, and then what's shown in, you know, in the field when I did my inspection. So it's my understanding that the uh, Belgian block was possibly a requirement of that initial uh, variance application. So it's not that I am requesting the Belgian block, I just want consistency as to knowing.
Gotcha.
Uh, you know, what is being proposed and, you know, what was previous, I guess what was previously approved. So, yeah, so it's not, it's not my requirement for the Belgian block, it's just, we just want consistency. On, you know, this plan versus what was previously approved.
Perfect, okay, so I think what I would recommend is that we leave this up to the engineer on the site to decide if additional. Block would be needed, uh, I mean, I know, I, I saw, I went to the site, there's a retaining wall there now. So um, would it be on top of the uh, the existing retaining wall or in front of? As I, personally, I don't see that additional Belgian, I mean, and may have been a requirement. I just don't see it, it's gonna decrease the parking spaces if we put it on the ground.
Yeah, so the Belgian block would be in the parking lot area, it would separate, it would be in front of where the retaining wall would be, so. Um, you know, yeah, it wouldn't really make sense to have it, you know, behind the retaining wall. I, I, I would defer to Mr. Gentile as to, uh, you know, what their plan is and what they anticipate doing. It is my understanding that, or he testified that they do plan on making improvements to the parking lot area. Maybe that will be part of that uh, that improvement would be to. Either, you know, add more Belgian block or replace the Belgian block or go to regular concrete curb, I, I'm not sure what they propose.
Gotcha, okay, uh, I, I guess, is there any other questions that you have about your report that haven't been addressed?
Um, uh, yes, actually, so, you know, as I mentioned, uh, I was not aware of the uh, previous application that was done, the C two application. So I just want to confirm that the landscaping, those plantar areas that, that go over the property line are in, that are into the public right-of-way. I just want, I guess, confirmation and, you know, to put it on the record that it was previously approved as the, as part of that C two application. Can Mr. Gentile or the uh, the attorney confirm that?
Yeah, we, that was presented as part of the C two application, um, and we had received no pushback or. Uh, any comments about that.
Okay, great. Um, the other thing that I had was the, uh, with regard to the parking lot. Um, the lot is in disrepair as I mentioned, um, and I believe you said that you, you do plan on um, making improvements. I just want to know, is that improvement is gonna be to, I know you, you did uh, testify about the restriping, but are you planning on uh, repaving?
Absolutely, it's, it's, it's not acceptable the way it is, and we've, like I said, we have. Delayed doing that until the construction is completed for the second floor, so we don't damage the work.
Okay, great. Now, uh, also with that repaving, uh, I just would like to suggest that we make sure that the grading. Does not change the drainage patterns for the lot so that it doesn't, you know, uh, you know, redistribute the runoff. Um, to the different catch basins on site. I, I know you did mention that you will be working with an engineer on that, and I just want to uh, make sure that. That would be, I guess, uh, one of the conditions of the approval.
Absolutely, we, we definitely want to improve the drainage as the, the work that we have done has caused uh. Uh, what do you go, residual issues, and we want to eliminate that. So there will be some re-scoping or re-sloping, possibly redirecting water to properly drain.
Okay, and then my last comment would be with regard to the, the site lighting. Um, I, I don't know that you, it's hard for me to see it on the screen. Uh, and I don't know that I have a, a revised or updated plan since the press, since the sprab meeting. I just want to make sure that the uh, the lighting will be adjusted, um. And, you know, and approved by the, by the township as a condition of, of the approval as well.
Yes, yes, we understand that we, I have to do that, and we want to make sure we have the adequate foot candles in the parking area as well as around the building.
Thank you, that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, Mr. Hazel, your report. Of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the first thing is the number of parking spots that are required for this project.
Yes, uh, as I indicated in the, my sprab report. The applicant did indicate that they were utilizing a, a different uh, uh. Standard for calculating the parking for the upstairs, so that while the parking, and, and another issue that. Was a bit of a discrepancy was that the exact square footage of the, of the, of the first floor office use. Based on the clarifications from the sprab, uh, I, I concur that there are eighteen spaces required for the uh. First floor office use, and I do also agree with the uh, applicant's contention that the uh, second floor. Is not part of that, counted as part of that first floor office use, medical office use, and. In fact, is a separate office, which would allow it to be uh, parking for it to be calculated at a, a slightly lower rate. So based on that, uh, there are eighteen spaces required for the office use on the ground floor. And uh, four spaces required for the office use on the second floor. In addition to that, there is a one-bedroom apartment which will also require two spaces, so based on that, I come up with. Twenty-four spaces being uh, required. The applicant is proposing twenty-one spaces, I do also concur with the uh, use, uh, the, the shared use of the parking. So that the parking that's available, that's required for the, the, the apartment at night can be some of the same space that is being. Allocated now to the office uses, so that in that case, uh, it's sort of, it's a wash in terms of what's required for the residential portion. So based on that, I believe that their parking is sufficient.
Oh, can I? I just, I have to be careful with the, with the resolution, what, what number of parking spaces is, in your opinion, Mr. Hazel, required?
Total. Required for the entire project would be twenty-four spaces.
Okay, so it's ju, okay, so, and they're showing twenty-one and it's your opinion, okay, I got it, okay. I thought maybe I was tallying the requirement wrong, okay.
Based on shared parking.
Based on the shared park.
Okay, now, i- in your report of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. There are.
Ten.
I'll get to it, uh, the, the, I'm just looking at the waivers.
Yep.
And what you, what you agree with, and we, just, let's go over the ones you don't agree with.
Good, good idea. Um, yes, of, of, I think that if I count, counted correctly, about ten that are being requested. Uh, two that I didn't agree with, one was number, uh, item number forty-four. Which was the uh, lighting situation, and I think uh, Mr. Scott. Addressed that in his report as well, the, 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 the lighting plan that was included in the package was not very legible. And so I wanted to make sure that the uh, lighting on the site was going to be sufficient, especially that now that there was going to be. A residential unit added, so that there would be, you know, uh, activity at night more on a regular basis. So I think that the response, uh, that was, the testimony was given by, uh, the architect was sufficiive for. This concern that I had, and also I, as, as, as I understand it, Mr. Scott was requesting uh, updated, um. An updated lighting sheet showing the isometric uh, numbers and, and intensities throughout the site. As a part of the uh, of any approval that's granted, so that would, in my opinion, suffice for item number forty-four.
Gentile, you'll have to comply with that.
Yes, I think we're totally agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the other item that I had was the uh, the item number forty-eight, which the site triangles, which the applicant has complied with since. And I, I, I have as number forty-nine being not, being objectionable as well, which is not number forty-nine, I'm sorry, number fifty-two. Which I think is an error, I have no objection to that.
Okay, good, so, um. Mrs. Gentile, so now you can agree with everything that is in Mr. Hazel's letter of Sept- report of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, correct?
I, I believe so, yes.
Yes, okay, so then, then it's up to the board. To grant the waiver for twenty-nine, thirty-five, thirty-six. Well, now everything can be waived based on Mr. Hazel's testimony, then everything is going to be taken care of. Is that correct, Mr. Hazel?
Correct.
Okay, so, let, let's find out, okay.
I, I have one more question for.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hazel, go right ahead.
In, in the sprab, it was raised, and I'm not sure, please forgive me if I missed any testimony you gave on this. Uh, tonight, but you raised the issue about the cars cutting through, uh, using the parking lot as a shortcut, and you were. Trying to figure out the best way to address that concern, um, have you come up with any possible remedies to, to that situation?
It's still being, it's still being analyzed and trying to find the most uh, appropriate way to handle this traffic.
I, I did, I did think about it a bit myself, and it's, it's a, hmm, an interesting situation, I'm not sure exactly what the. Uh, appropriate and the correct uh, approach to dealing with it is apart from having maybe some. Sp- speed bumps of some sort on the, on the site.
So, we've thought about that as well, but you know, even something as simple as uh, filming them. And running down their license plate and possibly, you know, sending them a cease and desist letter. I don't know, that may be just, you know, uh. Uh, a, a non-destructive way, because, you know, speed bumps are obviously going to cause a hazard.
Yeah.
Either plowing or people not seeing them, what have you. It, it's, it's uh, it's awkward to deal with them through a parking lot.
Yeah, well, I, I just wanted to bring it up on the record here, because I, I think it is a, 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 a. A significant, a potentially significant concern, especially at night if someone is there, since it's a residential unit as well. And someone is just zooming through, uh, especially at night, that, you know, someone may be out there pointing to their car or something and. And, and become a, a potential accident victim, so, uh, I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, let's go through the board. Uh, Mr. Guarino, Vice Chairman Guarino, do you have any questions for?
Uh, not, not at, not at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCarthy, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Well, most of my questions were going to be revolving around, if there were any conditions on the initial application. And Mr. Gentile did an excellent job explaining why many were not addressed. Um, I wanted to do men, I wanted to mention that just this weekend, I saw the floor-to-ceiling windows on Mount Pleasant side. And they're very aesthetically pleasing to see the office furniture there through that window. Uh, my question is, um, two, two questions. One, you mentioned the signage, every time I'm stopped at that light at uh, Mount Pleasant and Pleasant Valley Way. I try to guess what IMMC stands for. And I didn't know, I guess it means medical center, I don't know what that means. But if there is any way to clarify that for people, I think that would be helpful for the, for the site itself. Uh, to, to explain what IMMC stands for. Uh, that was just a, a suggestion I have, I just play that guessing game while I'm waiting for the light to change. Um, and this is the first I'm hearing about uh, residential space, are we zoned for residential spaces? That the variance that we're asking for, um. And to, to explain that. And I wanted to thank Mr. Hazel also for clarifying the parking spaces, because that was another one of my, my questions.
Okay, Mr. Gentile, you want to address that?
Yes, um, this is a conditional use within the, the B two zone to, for residential uh. Dwellings, and we've taken advantage of that because the, the owner of the building has to travel a distance in inclement weather or. You know, or working late, and they want a place to be able to stay, and therefore.
Excellent, okay, good, I'm glad that works out.
Great, thank you, council person.
I want to know about the signage, how about the IMMC, can that?
Yeah, so, so the I, I, IMMC stands for Internal and Metabolic Medical Center.
Uh-huh, and who would know that?
Uh, people who go there.
And would, would you want people to know that if they're looking for a place uh, that they may need that service?
Yeah, I can't speak to whether the applicant gets walk-ins or, or the like, but it's certainly something we'll consider for the. Once again, the sign um, application is not part of this current application, so we will, you know, we'll certainly. Consider that in a future signage application, that's a good comment, Mayor.
Well, that not, that is not one of the things I've guessed, though, while I was waiting for the light, I'll say that.
Got it.
It takes them a lot of space.
Yes, it does, and it will.
Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Mr. Gentile?
No, I don't at this time.
Thank you, councilperson. Uh, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. Gentile's testimony?
Um, I, I do, and I, I do want to hone in a little bit more on the signage, actually, um, because uh, on page nine, if you go up a, a couple pages in the uh. Site plan, it's, it's, it, right, right there, it appears there, along with the notation that the signage is going, that the existing sign is going to be reinstalled on the building. Um, you know, I don't want to belabor it, but, you know, there was that, there's been some community conversation on it, um. IMMC CACS's own Facebook account replied on a post, the Aug- in August of twenty-three, I was just looking at it. Saying that that's temporary signage and that they want to do something that's more aesthetically appealing. And, you know, I would encourage something more aesthetically appealing, you know, maybe a monument sign that just explains it's a medical building, the doctor's name, something, um. Just to think about, uh, because it does come up. Um, I would like to see uh, milling and paving required, um, as part of, as a condition. Of that lot, and my only other question, and I, I think it might, might be for a later. And my only other question, and I I think it might might be for a later witness, but I just want to mention it because it is the subject of a waiver request. Is solid waste management, only because you're adding a residential unit. And in the original approval, the solid waste uh plan was monthly pickup, and I just want to make sure that if this is if. If this is going to be for temporary use, that might be okay, but if somebody's going to be living there and producing household refuge. We just need to make sure that that's not going to sit for a month.
Okay, well, we can condition that, we can condition the out the uh use of that space for only the doctor that is the owner of the building.
No, no, you can't limit, no, it's it's a residential use, it's a separate apartment. You you can't live it, you can't limit who uses it.
So so with regard to waste pickup, we currently have weekly waste pickup. And that will continue. So pretty much nothing's going to change at the moment, because the person that works there could be the person that lives there, so there's not going to be any additional parking. And that's the end, that's the expectation, that's that's what it's planned for.
Alright, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Uh Mister Wilkes, do you have any questions for Mister Gentile on his testimony?
Um, no questions.
Thank you. Mister Morgan, do you have any questions for Mister Gentile on his testimony?
Uh, no questions, thank you for this for your testimony, sir.
Thank you. Mister Smaraldo, do you have any questions for Mister Gentile on his testimony?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mister Cadozio, do you have any questions for Mister Gentile on his testimony?
I have no questions, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Mister Cafr- Miss Cafred, do you have any questions for Mister Gentile on his testimony?
Um, yeah, I have a question. Um, can you confirm that there's going to be signage indicating that it's it's right turn only? At um both the the um the egress points?
Yes, it's already been noted on the drawings where the signage would be, because we did uh obviously. As part of the C two variance was required to add signage for that. So each exit has its uh the appropriate right turn only sign.
That's great, and then you also the, it looks like the striping will also be updated. After the the parking area is mil- uh milled and paved, is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
So condition I would add is that all conditions of the original C two variance in the original site plan have to be completed. Prior to giving the CFO for this space, and the parking lot needs to be repaved or repaired and restripped. Based on the original C two variants. Mister Chairman, if I could just add it with regard to the Belgium block discussion we had earlier, that. Yes. We will work with the um your engineer to to come up with a, you know, to show him our plan before we we build it. Okay.
Okay.
Um, do any members of the public have any questions from Mister Gentile on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mister Gentile on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing anyone.
Seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Mister Loughlin, would you like to sum up?
Yes, um, I'll be very brief. Based on the testimony you've heard tonight, we believe the board should approve our Myers site plan application. We believe that this project will enhance the neighborhood, and there is no detriment to either the township or the master plan. And I'd like to thank the board for its consideration of our application and time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Loughlin, thank you, Mister Gentile. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any que- comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
We'll close that portion of the of the application. Okay, for any, do any of the board members have any questions, or um actually, uh, Miss McGovern, would you like to go over the conditions?
Sure, sure, I'm not on mute, right? Um, the applicant will work with the township engineer as to the necessity of Belgium block as referenced in three point. In paragraph three point nine of the matrix report, the lot will be completely repaved. In paving the parking lot will consult with then in the township engineer to direct drainage. Uh agrees to comply with Mister Hazel's letter of September thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Lighting plan will be supplied specifically with respect to item forty four. In terms of the requested waivers and any conditions not. Any conditions set forth in the original application, which was known as PB twenty two dash oh four, are adopted herein and will be completed by the applicant.
But and we and the applicant accepts all the comments of the uh Matrix World Engineering Report of September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. As identified in the testimony by Mister Gentile and.
More comment?
I'm sorry, Ma- Mayor McCartney.
Yeah, thank you. For the uh conditions, do we need to uh reiterate the survey that's going to? That is required at the end of the application?
I think it's requested in the matrix report, but I can reiterate that if we need to, a final survey.
Yes, but it's it's uh one dot one in the in the uh matrix report, but yes, you could reiterate it, it's fine. And then um so for the the board's action. Um, Mister Hazel's uh letter, a report of September thirteen, twenty twenty four, there are a number of waivers. Mister Hazel has opined that we should grant them. And the ones that he had comments on where he objected to, now he agrees to, based on the testimony of Mister Gentile uh and Mister Loughlin. Um, I recommend that we grant the waivers as indicated in Mister uh Hazel's report. Does anybody have an objection? All in favor, say aye, opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, uh the waiver, we agree to uh, we agree to waive those. Requests as uh requested by the applicant. So having said that, um, you give me a second. There are no other comment by the planning board. I make a motion that we approve PB twenty four dash thirteen IMMC Health nine ninety three Pleasant Valley Way. Block one seventy two dot oh two, lot six, zone B two. Um, the applicant is proposing a second story addition to existing one-story commercial building. With conditions as shown, order, do I have a second?
Second, Mister Chairman.
Vice Chairman seconds, on the on the uh motion, Yamalat?
Mister Opert?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mister Wilkes?
Yes.
Mister Cadozo?
Yes.
Mister Women's Couple?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Is there where you know?
Yes.
Chairman Bagu?
Yes, motion carries, congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, board.
Have a wonderful evening.
You as well.
You too.
And 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 I'm one minute over, but it is ten thirty one, and I'm going to ask Miss John Basta if she would like to start her presentation of. PB twenty four dash fifteen Essex County Country Club.
Good evening, Mrs. Chairman, yes, we would love to start our application.
Okay, PB twenty four dash fif- fifteen Essex County Country Club, block one fifty six, lot one, zone R two. Three fifty Mount Pleasant Avenue, the applicant Essex County Country Club proposes a number of improvements to an existing. Pool house building on the subject site, the improvements include the expansion of the covered walkway, construction of an open air covered bar area. With a grill area, expansion of the existing patio and construction of a pergola with seating underneath, and for the applicant, uh Miss John Basta.
Yes, Lisa John Basta with the law firm Keith, the Shaheenine and Jan Tomasi on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as the board will recall, we last appeared before you on December eleventh. Uh, related to this application and went through a number of jurisdictional issues raised by a nearby resident. At the end of that uh meeting, the board determined that this application was properly venue. So we are ready to proceed with our affirmative case tonight. We intend to call our civil engineer, our project architect and our planner. I will remind the board that this is a fully conforming application with one minor variance related to the height of the accessory pool house structure. Which is uh we are requesting to be two point five feet over what's allowed by code. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to call our first witness, who is Paul Calabrese.
Go right ahead.
Mister Calabrese, please raise your right hand. Do I see him on on the screen? Okay, thank you, please raise your right hand, uh do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul, you have previously testified before uh this board, most recently in uh last year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is your license still current in civil engineering in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Mister Chairman, I ask you to be accepted as an expert in civil engineering.
Uh, do any members of the board have any questions about Mr. Calabrese's? What, dear? No? Mister Calabrese, you go right ahead, we accept you as a civil engineer. In the state of New Jersey.
Great.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Um, Paul, I, if you can, very briefly, I mean, you were the preparer of the site plans that were submitted in advance at tonight's meeting in the stormwater memo, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Oh, okay, uh, if you could briefly um address the existing location of the property. And then specifically hone in into the location of where the existing pool house is and the proposed improvements.
Sure, can I can I bring up the uh, can I share the uh exhibit to show the uh site?
Go right ahead, so just identify it, please, for the record.
Yes. Uh, let's share this one, hold on. I'll just hold on. There we go. And this is a a an exhibit showing an overall location plan of the uh complete property, uh I I hope everybody sees that up on the screen.
Do we have this in our packet?
Um, this was, this is an exhibit that we're adding today, that's just an overall exhibit that we wanted to give you and we'll give a.
We're gonna have to identify this for the record, Miss McGovern.
Okay, we're gonna call this A one, and what's the date on this?
A one, uh, I have it, it's undated.
Miss McGovern, actually, I think we're on A three, last at the December meeting, there was exhibit A one and two, so this would be A three.
Okay. Day one was amendment to the liquor license, A two, okay, alright, so this is A three. And what are we gonna call it? And we're gonna have it submitted um to to Ms. To Gemma Lett for, so that we have a record of it, but what are we calling this? Overall site plan exhibit?
I I I called an overall location plan.
Okay.
Given overall, uh, you know, location, because the site is so large, I just want to show.
And the date, sir?
I it it's undated because it's it's a draft, but if we want to grab a date, I have printed it on, and that'll be on the side, so let's use that date. Uh, December eleventh, two thousand twenty four.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Paul, what's showing on the screen, is that the existing golf course?
Yes, and I'm trying to make it so that it's reasonably sized for everybody, because it's obviously a big area. Uh, the existing property, you know, is is located at three hundred fifty Mount Pleasant Avenue, and our overall property is a hundred and seventy six point eight three acres. Uh, this site just shows all the improvements on the property, uh, you know, is is a golf course, we have a clubhouse. Uh, right here, uh, we have existing maintenance facilities here, uh, and over here, we have a pool building. Uh, and a pool complex. Uh, I know it's far out and I could zoom in more, but I really just wanted to show the uh the location of the pool from the property line. Which is uh over two hundred thirty six feet away from the property line, uh, which is more than far enough from the uh rear yard setback. Requirement of forty five feet, and also wanted to show that all the improvements that we are doing. The nearest residential property is eighteen hundred feet away, that's what this circle represents, is eighteen hundred feet. And uh, this is the closest prop- uh residential uh home or property that that gets touched initially. Uh, the closest property is the uh Princess Burn Golf Course, uh, which is the two hundred thirty six feet away.
Thank you, Paul, and the the property is located in the R two zoning district where the existing and proposed use is permitted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, if you could then move on to the location uh of the proposed improvements.
Sure. Um, so this is our our site plans, this is in the package, this is just the uh our our the site plans that have been submitted for the project. And I've got the site plan to show the improvements. So the the improvements, I want to show the existing right now, so existing, there is an existing pool. And there is an existing pool building on site. And there is existing, um, you know, six, uh, what we call canopy structures as well, and an existing kiddie pool. Uh, on on the site. So what this project is, is for the uh renovation and improvement of this space. Uh, right now, there is a concrete patio around the pool. And uh next what I'll do now is go quickly to the site plan to show what our uh our overall improvements are.
There's also an adult pool that's existing today, too.
Existing in-ground pool and existing kiddie pool, yes.
Okay, okay, great. The proposed improvements?
The proposed improvements, yes, the proposed improvements include an increase of the uh patio area around the pool. Um, that's shown by the this paper color here, this is an increase in the impervious area patio. Uh, the increase of the prairies patio is just to uh give more seating area. Uh, we are relocating uh the exi- uh these existing canopies. Uh, it's still the same number of canopies, same size, exact same canopies, they're just getting relocated uh to different locations uh for. You know, just for aesthetics and also for uh shading.
And Paul, the canopies, this is just lounge areas for the 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 club members using the pools?
Yeah, they just go over the 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 seating areas around the pool to give give like a shade. Uh, for the seniors, and they are already existing, like I said, we're just moving them to a a different locations or better locations. Uh, we are adding uh new new walkways, uh, and ADA improvements for ADA access to get to the pool building and get around the pool. Um, we are adding a uh new pergola structure uh area over here, which will also have some seating. Um, or the architect will get into more detail on the pergola area. We are also uh looking to add a formalized uh bar uh structure here with seating. Uh, with with the can- open air bar, outdoor bar area and grill area right here. And the existing pool building uh is going to have some interior renovations uh with the uh. And again, the architect will go into more detail, but uh, you know, including the uh some kitchen upgrades. Uh, and also, uh, I guess, a a new roof line uh to modernize the building look more. The overall square footage of the building, it, you know, is is staying as is.
Uh, the impervious, the impervious area that you just discussed, uh, the total additional impervious that's being added to to the site, is it? Uh, in the area of four thousand eight hundred and eighty five square feet?
Yes, that's exactly it.
Okay, great. Okay, um, if you can, then talk about the landscaping enhancements that are being proposed?
Sure, and I will pull that up quickly, this is the landscape plan. Um, again, I everybody's in everybody's packet, just wanted to put it up. We are, we are proposing adding, uh, you know, three new uh or uh ornamental trees. Forty one new new shrubs and a hundred and seven perennials outside of the pool area, so that would be like, you know, outside the fenced area. And then inside the pool area, we are adding uh ten trees, uh, seven dogwoods and three purpley uh European beaches. Eighty six shrubs, seventeen ornamental grasses and thirty perennials. Uh, you know, currently, right now, uh, there's just grass in the area, so we're we're trying to improve the uh landscaping and enhancing the landscaping in the pool area.
Uh, and what you described, that essentially is the totality of the site improvements, is that accurate?
That that is accurate, yes.
Okay, uh, and the improvements that you just discussed, it or is the application and the proposal still meeting? Uh, the minimum requirements of the zoning code related to setbacks and the like, and is it? Uh, also below the maximums for impervious coverage?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, you also, we also did receive some review letters in advance of tonight's meeting. One was from Matrix New World, dated September sixth, twenty twenty four, which was then after confirmed by CME. There were some um questions within here, and let's just go through them. Um, question three point one, the applicant shall provide testimony regarding the existing site conditions, proposed improvements and conformance with applicable zoning ordinances. I believe we just covered that. Um, three point three, the plan shows the parking lot improvements that were previously approved as part of a prior application. What is the status of of those improvements? And those are the parking improvements near the clubhouse, I believe, that are being referred to.
Yes, uh, so uh, yeah, so the 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 last application included um repaving the parking lot. Uh, adding, uh, you know, striping, adding the handicap stalls, the parking lot, um. Uh, in the the center of the lot, the parking lot has been paved, uh, the curbing has been installed. Uh, the parking lot lighting has has not been installed yet, that is actually being installed. Uh, either next, it's been installed in January, it's supposed to be next week, uh, because the lights just arrived. Um, so all that's in process, and and we are putting in the lights and adding the, and and we will add the plantings in the islands and the trees. Uh, when in the spring.
So all the improvements related to that prior application approval should be completed in the spring, is that the testimony, okay? Um, there was a question in three point four related to um the gate around the pool. Um, there was a question in 3.4 related to, um, the gate around the pool. Uh, the proposed gate is shown to be six feet in height with a top pull access mechanism. The applicant shall confirm that the gate is ADA accessible or provide testimony regarding alternative. Is the gate ADA accessible and, or, and/or will we, uh, put in an ADA gate?
So, uh, well, two things. One is, uh, you know, the pool is, is member use, uh, and when it, when the pool is open, there is a, an attendant at the gate. Uh, so the gate will be opened or, or shut, but will be managed by an attendant to let people in. However, we will have, you know, an ADA accessible, uh, gate closure. That's all we will include that.
Uh, 4.3 with another question for testimony, the applicant shall provide testimony regarding the need to construct any above or below grade improvements for utilities services. Can you address that?
Uh, should the, uh, water service to the pool building already exists, uh, as this is a renovation of the building, uh, so that will be, uh, reutilized. Um, electric, uh, was part of, of the last improvements and the, the electric has been brought down to the pool, the new electric. So that, that is completed, uh, and gas is already at the building. Uh, on the sanitary and, and existing sanitary drain, uh, connection will be made from the bar area, uh, which is shown and will connect, uh, to the, uh, new, um, pump station that will, will be installed in the spring to replace the, uh, antiquated, um, septic system.
7.1, uh, is another question as to whether any trees or any other types of shrubs are being removed for this construction.
No trees, no trees are being removed.
Okay, and, um, the applicant shall provide testimony regarding the, uh, compliance with the township ordinance related to lighting levels. And I believe our architect will address that, but the lane that's proposed in connection with this application is really architectural aesthetic lighting, uh, which is at a residential standard, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, I believe those address all the questions, uh, and comments for testimony, all other comments within the matrix letter dated September 6th, 2024. We, uh, the applicant is willing to comply with those comments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you. Okay, so members of the board, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Um, I have a question, but it may go to Ms. Jambasta or not to the engineer or the architect, but and if I'm allowed to ask this question, is this, you know, basically, will there be other developments being done within the clubhouse property after this project is done or during the course of this project's completion?
Uh, that's, that's not a question for him. We, we have to focus on the project in front of us.
No, okay, but I'm just trying to, to see, but the over thing, but if that can be-
Let's, let's focus on this, okay.
Okay. At this point, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Scarper, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No questions at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Smiraldo, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No, sir, I'll wait for the architect, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
Uh, yes, I have a question about the, uh, the landscaping. Um, can you confirm that, you know, the, the trees and other landscaping that you're planting, are those all native species?
Um, I, I, I believe so, and, and I can confirm that in, in a letter with the landscape architect, uh, who, who prepared the plan. Um, I'm civil engineer, I, I believe he did use a native, native plantings, but I will check.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we'll make that a condition, Ms. McGovern.
That's fine.
All, 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 uh, plantings must be non-invasive?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take this one.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I just have one quick question, uh, regarding 4.2 of the engineering review letter regarding, uh, really the drains, the patio drains around the pool. Um, can you just speak to first, I guess, uh, just is there any existing stormwater infrastructure that could be connected into with those, uh, pipes? And two, uh, will the scour holes, can you confirm the scour holes will be sized based on SCD regulations?
Um, yes, uh, this, Mr. McNeil, uh, first, first thing is, uh, SE, we have an SESC permit and they asked that question. Uh, so we did address that in the SESC permit and we can give you the scour calculations, uh, for your use. So we did, there's no, uh, storm, uh, facilities in that area.
Okay, and I guess the last thing there is just, it seems like that one scour hole may, the location may be need to be revised based on grading. Um, is that something you could address, uh, under resubmission addressing comment 4.2?
Yes.
Okay. Great, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any member of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Seeing no hands.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Calabrese.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Our next witness is Jeff Rodding, and I see him as an attendee, if he can just be elevated.
Ms. Jambasta, it's 10:50. Does he have nine minutes worth of information? If longer, then let's, let's carry him.
No, he can get it done in nine minutes.
Nine minutes, rock and roll.
Okay, who is it?
It's Shay, R-A-W-D-I-N-G is what it's showing up as a screen name.
Okay. It's voting now. And here he is.
Oh, there he was.
There he goes. He's back.
Okay.
Do you, what is your first name?
Jeff Rodding.
Jeff, okay, Mr. Rodding, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Uh, Jeff, can you briefly state your educational and professional background for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and, and nine other states. I've been, uh, practicing since 1984 on the president of FJ Rodding, AIA, out of Moorestown, New Jersey. I've testified before, I believe this board many years ago, but, uh, probably 20 or 30 boards, uh, throughout the state as an expert architect. Is your license, uh, is your license up to date in the state of New Jersey? Yes, it is. Okay, uh, do any members of the board have any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Rodding, we accept you as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir. And I'll make it quick. Uh, can I share the screen?
Please.
Okay. So as, uh, our engineer stated, we're, we're proposing to renovate the existing pool building. Uh, what you see before you is our drawing A1, which I believe is in your set. Uh, and, uh, to describe the building, it's a rectangular building presently.
I don't know about anybody else, but I do not see your screen.
You don't see it?
I don't see it either.
Yeah.
Uh, hang on. Hang on, let me get to the bottom. Let me put it back down here and go share again. How about now? No.
It looks like it's popping up.
There it is, yes, go right ahead. Okay. Um, now I gotta be quicker. So it's a rectangular building, uh, that exists today. Uh, we're proposing some interior renovations. As, uh, uh, Paul said, we're renovating the kitchen area, all new equipment, some, a new hood through here. We're renovating the bat, the existing bathrooms, locker room area, uh, with new finishes. Uh, there's physically gonna be no additional interior space added to the, to the building. We are creating an outdoor space right here, uh, with an extended roof for the purposes of, uh, food pickup. That would be a food window right here for the members to come up and grab their lunch or their snack or whatever. Uh, and this is all undercover in front of the building. It runs across the front of the building here. Uh, we are proposing a gazebo, uh, area over here, open air, uh, with a bar beneath it. Uh, the bar sits, uh, approximately 21 people. Uh, it'll be a full-service bar. There's also a chair rail that allows for more seating along the, uh, open air of the bar. Uh, topographically, you're up, uh, you know, a few feet from the parking lot here, three or four feet from the parking lot here. So you're, you're looking into the tree line over the Francis Byrne area. Uh, we have a trellis, uh, which is not shown completely on this, uh, drawing here. Uh, but it somewhat looks like, did that rendering come up, that drawing come up?
Not, not the trellis.
The, the trellis come up? No?
No.
Yeah, I think you have to scroll down.
Let me, uh, let me see if I can put that back where it was. There you go. So the trellis, you know, it is something like this, uh, sounds the, uh, the heavy trees on the, on the outside, do you see it now?
Uh, yes, Jeff, so I don't, I don't believe that this was submitted as part of the application, so can we-
No, no, this could, this could be an exhibit if you like, I think we're-
It's gonna be A4.
A4.
Is that, is that a rendering or an actual photograph?
This is an actual photo of a similar trellis, uh, that we're proposing for the, for the space. But essentially, that's the element that runs down the left side of the pool as, uh, as per the site plan. Uh, if I can go back to my, my plans here, I'll flip to make it back to this guy. And then, uh, so looking at the plan from the outside, uh, this is again A2, which is in your set. Uh, you're looking at the top elevation is the elevation that you would see from the pool, uh, side. And, uh, in the middle here is that, uh, area where you're picking up your food. Uh, this is the new element that we added, this gable, uh, facing the pool side. And you'll note, uh, left and right of that gable, uh, is a line that represents the ridge of the existing building. Uh, we've exceeded the ridge, uh, by a couple of feet here, and I believe it was two and a half feet, uh, two foot two, uh, above the existing ridge, uh, to make it 17 foot two. And, uh, the reason for that is we wanted to maintain the same, uh, architectural pitch as, uh, as the pool house itself, and it's just put us over the, over the top a little bit. It's really not too impactful. Uh, if you look at it from the opposite parking lot side, uh, without the landscaping, uh, you'll see that, 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 uh, that ridge over, overtakes the back of the roof here and becomes the louver vent, uh, for the, uh, kitchen exhaust. So it, it has a purpose. Uh, we also, uh, are showing the gazebo area to the left. This is physically connected to the existing building and you can walk into it, uh, via the, uh, cover of the porch. Uh, so you don't have to go out and in, you'd be walking into the pool, uh, into the gazebo area itself. And then we have a decorative, uh, rail up above the, the one-story porch, uh, that runs around the face. We're proposing new windows, new siding, um, and, uh, and, uh, uh, this is the portico as, I mean, it's the gazebo as you look at it from the opposite side. Uh, that's pretty much my direct, I'd be happy to open up the, for questions.
Jeff, just, just so we can talk a little bit about the height. So the existing height of the pool house building is, uh, 15.5 feet, is that correct? Approximately?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, and the, the maximum permitted accessory height of, I'm sorry, the maximum permitted height for accessory structures under the code is 15 feet, is that accurate?
That's true.
Okay, and what is being proposed as it relates to the pool house renovation? You're proposing a ridge of 17.2 feet, and then for the pergola, I believe it's 17.83 feet, is that accurate? Uh, not pergola, the covered bar area, 17.83 feet?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, and what is the reasons for the deviation from the code?
It's really to, uh, uh, keep the architectural aesthetic and match the roof pitches, uh, that exist. Uh, we could potentially lower it, but I think architecturally, uh, uh, it, it would be more important to keep the aesthetic. It's, there's no impact here to anybody but the adjacent parking lot. Uh, and we, we feel that this is the appropriate pitch, uh, on the roof.
Right, and given the, the testimony of Mr. Calabrese, the location of the proposed structure from other surrounding areas, this is, is essentially would not be visible uh, from outside of the site itself, or at best, it would be visible from the adjacent golf course, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, as far as the lighting that's being proposed, there's some, uh, wall lighting and path lighting. Can you discuss the lighting intensities of those, those lights?
Certainly, I mean, the, what we're proposing are, are simple, uh, residential, uh, sconces on, uh, a couple of walls, but we're also, uh, mostly under canopy lighting. As I said, there's a porch that runs, uh, uh, along the whole facade on the pool side. Uh, the, the fixtures themselves will not be visible, uh, you know, from outside the, uh, pool area itself, only if you look up, and the same holds for the, for the, uh, uh, gazebo as well. So, uh, there should be no impact, uh, outside this property, nor outside the pool area for that matter.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Okay, um, we're gonna start at the bottom. Ms. Caffrey, would you, do you have any questions?
One minute. No, no, I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions? Mr. Cardoza? We'll come back. Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
The only questions I really have are related to the kitchen, the upgrades that told, I mean, all new, um, suppression system, uh, and grease laden vapors and all, uh, with the screens.
Yes, you have, uh, new ancil system, new hood, uh, and new exhaust.
Okay, and then the outside gazebo, uh, gazebo area, whatever, where the bar's gonna be, there's gonna be nothing, food will be brought there, but not cooked there, correct?
That's correct.
I have nothing else.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions?
Your questions.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarper, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Garina, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Great, we're gonna stop now and hold for public questions. We're gonna have to carry this.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we close out the testimony of this professional open to, to public questions and, and perhaps put on our planner? I think we could finish this in 10 minutes.
Can't do it, can't do it. I'm sorry, 11 o'clock, we're done. I'll, I'll, I'll ask the public if they have any questions. That's it. Okay, do, do any members of the public have any questions about the testimony?
Not seeing it.
Does any member of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Nope, no hands.
Okay, seeing none. We'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay, we gotta carry it.
Mr. Chair, I have one witness who, there's one minor, one minor variance to go over. I, he can do this in less than five minutes. I'm almost certain of it.
Okay, five minutes, the board will kill me. They may vote me out next meeting.
They'll never do that.
Go for it, go for it. You may vote me, you may never see me again.
Uh, Mr. Pasalano.
I'm here. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Ready to be sworn.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm trying to, oh, here, I couldn't find you on the screen. Um, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Indeed, I do.
Thank you.
Michael, um, you previously testified before the board and were accepted as an expert in professional planning as recently as last year, is that accurate?
That is.
Is your license still current?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair, I say be-
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Pasalano as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Pasalano, uh, can you discuss what you did in advance of tonight's meeting to prepare for the hearing? And then, uh, we did address that there was one variance that's being requested here related to the height of the accessory structure. Can you please go through your variance proofs as to why it would be appropriate for the board to grant this application?
Yes, gladly. I, I've certainly, uh, visited the site, familiarized myself with the application materials. Um, there were many, um, but looked at all of them, uh, familiarized myself with the applicable zoning and master plan provisions, discussed it with the, uh, project team, uh, and prepared, uh, the following remarks. Uh, we have a simple height variance for an accessory structure of a nominal nature, the height variance that is very nominal. Um, the, the, the excess was, uh, detailed in earlier testimony. I believe it meets all five, uh, of the, uh, criteria for a C2 variance to be granted. Um, it's a specific piece of property. Uh, this application would advance two purposes of municipal land use law. Purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment with the architectural integrity that was just described, um, and consistency, excuse me, and also to provide for appropriate locations for, uh, recreational uses to meet the needs of the state citizens. This is certainly an appropriate location tucked away into the site, uh, and not visible to the surrounding community at all. Um, and on the basis of that, those are public benefits, there is really no basis for finding of substantial detriment, uh, not even any detriment, in my opinion. This is so de minimis. basis for finding of substantial detriment, uh, not even any detriment, in my opinion, this is so de minimis. And because it cannot be perceived um, from near or far without measuring it, I, I think uh, it can be approved without a doubt that uh, there would be no detriment to the public good. Finally, the master plan encourages uh, continuation and, and support of facilities such as this throughout the township. So uh, no conflict with the master plan. It meets the statutory criteria for approval. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir, very much, sir. Okay, so um, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarpa, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Smeraldo, do you have any question? Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
And Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Outstanding. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified, I'm sorry, Mr. Passalano on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
No hands.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, no hands.
Great, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Passalano.
Thank you for allowing me to testify, Mr. Chairman.
I may not be in next time because of this, but it's okay.
I still thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, we're gonna carry the meeting. This meeting will be carried without any further notice.
Can we get a vote on the?
No, 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 I'm sorry, we gotta, we gotta look this over, we're not gonna vote on it tonight, I'm sorry. That's it.
Okay, I, okay, at the next hearing, I is there a reason why we, we can't get a vote for tonight's? It's a simple application variance free, I mean, one variance, which Mr.
Okay.
Mister test.
They're gonna kill me, can I get five minutes from the board? Would, is anybody objecting to another five minutes?
No.
Five minutes? Okay, good.
Carry on.
Okay, 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 okay. So do any members, do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
No hands.
None, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. Okay, so, based on the testimony of Mr. Calabrese, uh, and Mr. Rodding, and Mr. Passalano, and the support of the uh, height variance, and that it is a useful, one is a useful structure because it is blocking out one of the vents from the kitchen. It is also consistent with the heights of other structures in, in the uh, it's consistent with other heights of structures in the area. It is uh, promoting the visual, it is not visual from the neighboring homes. It, it is not detrimental to the zone plan, it's consistent with the master plan. I make a motion that we approve. PB twenty-four, there's fifteen SS County Country Club Block one thirty-six, Lot one, Zone R two thirty, uh, Mount Pleasant Avenue. The applicant, SC County Country Club proposes a number of improvements to an existing poolhouse building on the subject site. The improvements include the expansion of the covered walkway construction, the open air covered bar area with a grill area expansion of the existing patio and construction of the pergola with seating. Uh, and I agree that the C two variance should be granted, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's the part, Mr. Smeraldo seconds on the motion, yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
And the woman Scarpa?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Yes. Mr. Weyena?
Yes.
Chairman Bagof?
Ms. Jambasta, you run a hard bargain, yes, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Happy New Year to everybody. Don't go away, don't go away, don't go away, I gotta read this, otherwise they're gonna really get me, okay? The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM via Zoom. The next special meeting of the Planning Board after that will be held January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in person in Town Hall. The next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held February fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, moved in second by Mr. Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, the eyes are above the nose. Motion accepted. Have a good evening, everybody, thank you.
Night, everybody.